Emma, ready?
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for June 12th, 2024. Bill after six o'clock. We're here in the city council chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have two public hearings this evening involving amending our zoning ordinances. Call please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have the quorum.
Thank you. Let's start off with offering a prayer. Council member Tim Nab, following a pledge of allegiance, be staying if you are able.
Dear Lord, we're gathered this evening in the work of our great city. We ask you guide us in our decisions, keeping Hamilton a safe, clean, and prosperous place for our residents and their loved ones to work, live, and play. Please watch over our first responders as they care for the needs of our citizens, businesses, and visitors, continue to protect our armed forces all over the world as they keep the United States and those countries relying on our nation to assist them in being free from tyranny and unjust rule. Father, we pray these petitions in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Next go to special presentations. And the first one we have is Home and Garden Awards with Ann Coombs. Good evening, Ann. It's hard.
This is Mabel Parker.
I've used a microphone here.
Mabel Parker, and she's a widow and has taken care of this yard for over 30 years. It's on a corner.
Now, let's start off. Tell us a little bit about the home and appearance award. Tell us about the appearance award. Generally speaking, how long you been doing this?
Oh, five.
Oh, five? Not just five years, oh, five.
Oh, five.
Thank you for bringing these folks who take care of their homes so well to our attention. Up on the screen, is that your home, isn't it, Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your home there and we'll...
Well, I've lived there for 50 years. I've lived alone 32 years. I'm 89 and I still do my yard work.
You should just drop this right now, you know that, don't you? And go home, work my yard. I've got a couple things for you.
Sure.
This framed is of your home and indicates appearance award. This is to certify that Mabel Parker, 795 Milliken Street, was hereby awarded this appearance award for you taking care of your home. That looks great. That really, really does. You like to pull the weeds and everything?
I have to tell you who I am. Gina Hudson's grandma.
Okay. I feel like really old now.
No, I am old. But that's what keeps me going, yes.
I am not a bit surprised at you two folks relating. Hold that up while I read to you something else here. This is also from all of us on city council. City of Hamilton, Ohio. This is certified that Mabel Parker, 795 Milliken Street, was hereby awarded this certificate of recognition for receiving the June 2024 Home and Garden Appearance Award. Home and Garden Appearance Award and for dedication to keeping the city of Hamilton beautiful. Some of myself as mayor acknowledged by all of us on council. Thank you so very much. You've inspired all of us today. That is yours as well?
I've enjoyed it, I told myself. I didn't know how to start a lawn mower or nothing, but I...
How about a round of applause for a great, great lady? Anything else, Ann?
I'll see you next month.
Great. Thank you, Ann, for your years of service and continuing to educate us on some folks who just love and take care of their homes and neighborhoods.
Thank you. What a surprise this was. I didn't know anyone would ever notice.
I think we all noticed it, but she got it done to recognize you out here in front of council. Tommy John from Boys and Girls Club, come on up here with a true leader, Demarian Samples. Demarian is going to be speaking to us, is that correct?
He is.
Do you want him to speak to us from out here in the middle? Would that be better? Or not?
Well, how do you feel?
Um, that's good. I do.
Right.
What'd he say?
Well, I'm going to say a few things and then we'll give him the microphone and he can come right out there to the middle.
All right.
He loves having the microphone. Thank you, city council. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city manager, for having us here today. Really excited to give you some updates on some things we have going on with Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton, and we're grateful for our partnership with the city of Hamilton. I have to start by giving you our club code there. It's up on the screen. The...our club members say this every day, and so I want everyone to know who's watching on TV Hamilton and here today, that what we do at Boys and Girls Clubs isn't just about something to do after school. It's not just somewhere safe to go in the summer. It is, but it's more than that. It's about character development. It's about instilling lifelong skills into our youth and teens in Hamilton so they can be successful Hamiltonians and successful in whatever career path they choose in the future. These are our values. Our kids say these every day, too. Teamwork, memories, friendship, family, and fun. We have to make sure that it's fun. We have to make sure it's making memories, and we instill in our youth and teens that working together is paramount to success in whatever career path you choose. This was some data from a recent Ohio University study that shows for every dollar invested in Boys and Girls Clubs yields a $35.16 return to the local economy. And that's because parents can go back to school. That is because our youth stay in the cities where Boys and Girls Clubs are. There is...we're investing in prevention instead of being reactive to what happens when you don't invest in prevention. And so I love to share this because all of our programs are completely free at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton. We have two standalone locations on East Avenue, Grand Boulevard. We have a location at Highland Elementary in partnership with Hamilton City School District, and we have three mobile clubs, and this year we just opened a teen center. And so we're expanding because the need is there. In the most recent Butler County Health Assessment, it showed that 50% of families said that affordable childcare is a serious problem in Butler County. And I like to think at Boys and Girls Clubs, we're making a big difference because all of our programs are completely free. There's no scholarship needed. Families just have to sign up and utilize this service. This is our summer mobile club that we're so proud of in partnership with Hamilton Parks Conservancy, City of Hamilton, and Division Partnerships. This is a free walk-up program. We were just at one today where we had about 30 teens at Officer Bob Gentry Park, playing pickleball, eating lunch, having fellowship, and doing some great activities, learning, making some crafts, doing a positive thing in the summer. And so the locations and times are up there. Wednesdays, we're at Bob Gentry. Thursdays, our mobile club is at Sims. And Fridays and Saturdays, we're at pop-up locations. I like to thank the city. I like to thank Hamilton Parks, and specifically I like to thank Liz Hayden for making sure that this program could happen for our teens this summer because we're already seeing the teens come out to engage with this program, and there is a desire to engage. As much as I think teens are difficult for some people to understand, they want to be engaged, they want to be mentored, they want to have fellowship with each other, and providing opportunities for them to do that their own way is very important to the development of those teens here in Hamilton and Butler County. So just some data from our past year. I was up here last year and the data probably looked a little bit different, but we're proud to say that 300% increase in average daily attendance. And so I've been at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton now about a year and a half, and in that time, we've seen an overall increase from serving 50 youth a day to serving about 250 youth a day. And that makes a big difference, and we added teens. As you, most of you know, I'm sure, I know that Mr. Goodoo Lee knows from the Hamilton Community Foundation, because they're a big supporter of our teen program, that a year and a half ago, we weren't serving any teens. And now I'm proud to say we have 70 teens registered in our program with Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton and a teen center that's dedicated just for their space. And you're going to hear from one of our outstanding teens here in just a minute. Overall, use served have increased from 165 to 505, and we're putting people to work too in Hamilton and in Butler County. We've increased our staffing from eight to 23, which includes a lot of full-time positions with benefits, 401K, 10% 401K match, PTO, so it's a great place to work for our staff as well. Our three pillars are our world-class clubs, our life-enriching programs, and our caring adult mentors, and that's how we guide everything that we do at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton is based on one of these three areas. So I just want to give you a quick update in each of these priority areas. Caring adult mentors, all of our staff are 100% PACS tools-trained, and PACS is Latin for peace. It's the way that we work through behavioral situations. It's the way we model our culture and our clubs from a trauma-informed standpoint. We believe that there's a reason for every behavior, right? Kids are not just acting out because teens don't just do things that they shouldn't because there's a reason for every behavior, and in order to help them through that, we have to understand that. And that's what our PACS tools approach is all about. So 100% of our staff are PACS tools-trained, so requirement of working for Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton is that approach. This club, this gym at our Grand Boulevard location is how it used to look. You see the old bleachers, old backboards. The building is about 60 years old. I know that Vice Mayor Pullman used to play basketball in there when he was a kid, and it probably looked exactly the same as it did back then, but we're proud to say that this is what it looks like now. Complete renovation of our Grand Boulevard Gymnasium, which will serve a lot of teens, a lot of youth. You'll see some athletic programs there, complete renovation. And I invite everyone on city council and everyone who's watching and listening to come to our ribbon cutting in partnership with the Greater Hamilton Chamber on the 20th, June 20th, at 5:00 PM. There'll be food from Tano. If coming to the gym's not enough, there's also food by Tano. And Demarian will be speaking at that as well, so come and enjoy that ribbon cutting ceremony at our Grand Boulevard Gym. You're all invited because it's everything that, every resource that we have, and I shared this, I think, with most of you, every resource at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton, I want to be the city, the community's resources because I'm a firm believer in every gift, every donation, every dollar that we have should be maximized to serve and help as many people as possible. I'm going to introduce Demarian in just a second, but I have to give you a little bit of context about Youth of the Year and what an amazing accomplishment this is. And so Youth of the Year is Boys and Girls Clubs' highest honor. Every year, an organization, there's over 5,000 Boys and Girls Clubs in the country and around the world on military bases, they select a Youth of the Year. Okay? Youth of the Year represents that organization. In order to be selected Youth of the Year, you have to write three essays, collect reference letters, do a 15-minute interview, and a three-minute speech in front of a panel of judges and be selected to be a Youth of the Year. Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton has been around for 70 years. As I mentioned, we have grown to serve teens, hasn't had an official Youth of the Year in the organization's history. So this was the first time that we had a local Youth of the Year for Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton, and then going forward, Demarian competed a few months ago in Columbus at the state competition. And so not only was Demarian recognized as our local Youth of the Year here in Hamilton, but Demarian was selected as the state winner. So that's going against cities like Cleveland, Cincinnati, Columbus, a lot of Boys and Girls Clubs with a lot more resources, a lot more locations, who have had teen programs a lot longer. And that just shows you how incredible our youth and teens are in Hamilton and how incredible Demarian is. And so that event on the 20th at the ribbon cutting is also going to kind of serve as a well wishes for Demarian because the following week, he's going up to Chicago to compete for the Midwest Youth of the Year. So he'll compete against state winners from around the Midwest, and someone will be recognized as the regional Midwest Boys and Girls Clubs of Americas Youth of the Year. And so it is a huge deal. He's going to serve as the ambassador and the advocate for teens, for the state of Ohio, for all Boys and Girls Clubs for the next year. We have some folks from the Ohio Alliance who are here that make sure that that happens. He's already met Lieutenant Governor's wife. I think that you, I think you guys got along very well, I would say. So Demarian has a platform of advocating for positive mental health, positive place of being for teens all across the state of Ohio and empowering Boys and Girls Clubs to do that. So I'm going to introduce him, and he's going to give his three-minute speech that he did in Columbus, which helped him to be crowned the 2024 Ohio Youth of the Year. So I'd like to introduce Demarian Samples.
Hi, everyone. I'm Demarian. I'm so glad to be here. But before I start off, I would like to say that I'm coming out here today to tell you guys my story is the most hardest part that I have done in my entire life by just speaking about my story and about my personal struggles I've dealt with. But I want to say that mental health is super important, and it is so important that we, as a community, stand up for teens who are struggling with poor mental health. Did you guys know that your chances of finding a four-leaf clover is one in 10,000? Did you guys know that your chances of getting attacked by a shark is nearly one in 4 million? These things probably wouldn't happen, but the next thing is very likely to happen. The chances of you knowing a teen who has had thoughts of suicide is one in five. Help me and the Boys and Girls Club to make one in five, none in five. I started attending the Boys and Girls Club when I was seven years old. I lived there. The club was like my second home and family. When I was a kid, the club cost 50 cents a day, so every after-school, I would rush home and grab my 50 cents and hit straight to the Boys and Girls Club. The club was there for me no matter what. Staff at the club helped me with my homework. Staff at the club gave me food when I was hungry, and staff at the club gave me school supplies when I needed them. I love celebrating my birthday. I mean, like, who wouldn't, though? It's your birthday, of course, right? However, my 13th birthday was depressing. Turning 13 means I can alert 10 the Boys and Girls Club because they did not have a teen program. It was around the...it was around the age...it was around the age of 13 that I realized I'm different than other kids my age. Other kids started to realize I was different, too. I started getting bullied for the way I spoke and the way I walked. Teenage years are hard. Bullying is different for teens today. With social media, there is no escaping it. Sadly, the bullying got worse. When I came out skate to my friends and family, I was not accepted. People that I had known my entire life turned their back on me. People who I thought would be accepting acted like they did not know me. I thought everyone had given up on me, so I decided to give up on myself. I have tried to take my own life 10 times. My parents had me admitted to a psychiatric hospital so I could see professional help. I was admitted for about a week. When released, I started using marijuana and nicotine. I was doing anything to numb the pain. My depression and anxiety was eating away at me. I, Demarian Samples, represent the 20% of teens who have had thoughts of suicide and the 10% of teens who have attempted suicide. I'm lucky because I'm here today to tell you guys my story. My story is not a tragedy, and I do not want you guys to feel bad for me. I truly believe if we had more clubs and more things to do after school and more others to serve others, that there would be a lot less mental health trauma. I am so grateful that Boys and Girls Club now allows teens to attend the club. Boys and Girls Club changes lives. I know it's because it did for me. When you walk to the doors of my club, everyone is equal. The club loves you no matter how much money your parents make. The club loves you even if you're clinically depressed, and the club loves you no matter your sexuality or how you identify. My club cares that all youth and teens are respected and feel loved. With the support of my Boys and Girls Club, my chances of being successful are certainly high.
Awesome job. Proud of you. And I know it's not easy, and if anybody would like to stand up and share some, one of their toughest days in front of a room full of folks like this, I would challenge them to do so. One of the things that, the things that he does and has accomplished is such a small percentage of people in the world that they would ever do in their entire life. So we're incredibly proud of him, Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton, and excited for his future. And just, I know that there's more teens out there like Demarian who just need someone to help unlock their potential and support them so that they have somewhere to go after school because there's a lot more, there's a lot more stories like Demarian's in the community that we probably will never realize, and I hope that we can continue to work together on so that we can continue to realize and hear these stories in the future. Thank you. Thank you to council, and thank you to all of you for having us here tonight. We appreciate it.
I just want to say, Tommy, that Boys and Girls Club has just grown so much in the last 18 months, and you're meeting needs of our city youth. And council's going to, I think, give you a proclamation that says you can't leave town. You and your wife-to-be cannot leave town. So plan on being here a long time. Is that okay, Demarian, if he stays here forever?
Would council mind if Demarian came up to take a group photo? Would that be okay?
It's fine.
Thank you.
Is Samantha Wolf here by chance? Do you want to say anything? I know you're with Boys and Girls Club as well, is that correct?
Um, no, we're just, we're proud of Demarian and the Boys and Girls Club to do what we're doing for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess we'll go down here. You're going to try and stand up here. You want to sit in my chair? Are you sure?
You standing with him?
Sorry?
The chairs all back.
Yeah, we'll try to put everybody on my head there.
That leaves you next.
Great. One, two, three. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tommy. Thanks for your show. Next, we have Historic Hamilton, Hamilton Community Foundation, governing our Cincinnati Hamilton-Dayton railroad depot. Everybody, Historic Hamilton, please come on up here, and we're going to use a microphone. And John Goodoo, if you join us, please.
Good evening. The Historic Hamilton Group has been in existence since 1970s, and we're proud to be able to support all the various efforts in the community to improve our economy but also retain that historical nature that is so important in Hamilton. And to help recognize that, we as a group, and all these folks are Historic Hamilton Board members except these two and John, we have a check to present to the Hamilton Community Foundation this evening, and I need help to hold this, for $10,000 to be a catalyst to raise funds for the restoration of the train station here in Hamilton, as Mayor Mohler mentioned previously. We're very proud of the fact that the train station has been moved up the street and is integral to the city. So we're hoping that others in the community will step forward and contribute to this fund for the train station restoration that we've created tonight. So, thank you.
On behalf of the Hamilton Community Foundation, we're grateful for the contribution. As Cynthia mentioned, we do, we have a fund now at the Hamilton Community Foundation to accept donations for that. Honestly, all donations, large and small, will help. I was asked by the mayor to also mention that at our most recent board meeting last week, the Hamilton Community Foundation was asked to consider a grant request to help with that, and we've awarded $150,000 towards that project. So we now have 150,000 plus 10,000, and it's my understanding there's still a need. So I would respectfully ask everybody to consider making a contribution. You can do it at our website, hamiltonfoundation.org, or mail a check to us. But, I mean, I think you can see the city has taken this on as a very serious project, made very, a lot of progress on it. It's looking good, needs a few more things to reach the finish line, so hopefully people will step up and be part of that. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Historic Hamilton. You celebrate our history, and behind the scenes, you folks do a lot of things to make sure Hamilton's history is not forgotten and is actually cherished, and makes one of the special things we have about our city is our city's god of history, and thank you, Historic Hamilton.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Jennifer.
You want to take this whole boy?
Is ready for the short-term rental question and answer session?
Yeah, so I'll have our presentation by our Director of Community Services, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, city council and residents of Hamilton. We've had a couple of presentations about short-term rentals at previous meetings, but I wanted to recap some questions that I have received since the last meeting and so that we had it all, so everybody has the same information that I provided to city council. So the first question that we received is, is Hamilton experiencing an influx of short-term rentals? And this is the trend line that you can see on the screen.
There have been no calls for the ones in the Highland Park prohibition area, but there have been complaints received by the planning department about different miscellaneous issues, both in Highland Park and Hickory Woods. And we've encouraged people, especially if it's on the weekends, that you need to call, you know, if it rises to the level, you know, a noise complaint or something else that's a violation of a police ordinance, to call so that there's documentation. But, there's not, that has not happened. So, one of the questions is, can Highland Park create their own HOA, Homeowners Association? This is something that I thought was possible and had discussed with some people in the Highland Park neighborhood, but the feedback that I received from legal counsel was that this is not a practical solution. The way that the Ohio Revised Code reads, it says something about that HOA should be formed while the subdivision is still under development. And even if it was possible, every single property owner would have to agree to it. So, it's not a real practical recommendation. Why would the city prohibit short-term rentals in Hickory Woods? They are, this neighborhood already has an HOA to deal with the issue. They do have an HOA to deal with the issue, so they are able to address this issue on their own. However, both residents in Hickory Woods and Highland Park asked the city to prohibit short-term rentals in their community, and the city is not able to enforce HOA regulations. So, in a worst-case scenario, this would be an extreme situation, hopefully unlikely, but if there was a property owner that knowingly wanted to violate the HOA regulations and we did not have a prohibition, we would still have to grant that license if we didn't have a prohibition in the neighborhood. So, that was our thinking, and just that we wanted to treat all neighborhoods equally in their requests, since we aren't able to enforce HOA regulations. Can we limit the number of short-term rentals in Hamilton or in certain areas instead of prohibiting them in certain areas? This is more of a question on if we could, like, create a limit, a number limit of number of short-term rentals in the whole city, or instead of prohibiting them all together in a neighborhood, could we cap it at a certain number? Legal counsel has recommended that that is not the best practice. They are recommending something that's a consistent regulation for all property owners, whether they're the first to come and apply or the last to come to apply. So, that would mean either have it be something that's permitted, prohibited, or a conditional use for all properties in the same neighborhood or zoning district. Have other cities banned short-term rentals citywide? The answer is yes. There are cities, there are municipalities in Ohio that have banned them citywide, and the bans have been upheld. There's discussions about, there have been some proposals that have gone to the state to change that, but they have stalled and are not, don't seem to be proceeding at this time. Can council vote on portions of the proposed regulations separately? Yes. If there are pieces of this that council wishes to adopt and other pieces that they do not support, that we would, staff would request direction on that so we can have the right regulations be brought forth. So, recommended next step would, from staff, would be that council provide guidance on the desired regulations so we can come back with an updated ordinance at the next council meeting. So, I want to say, you know, if the ordinance as proposed tonight is the desire of council, that would just be what to vote on tonight, and action can be taken and completed tonight. But if there is a desire to say, we like this part, but we don't like this part, here are a couple options that I have kind of heard questions about. An ordinance that includes the proposed general updates to the short-term rental license program but does not include the proposed prohibition areas. And I'll say that this is, that there are general updates being proposed that are just based on lessons learned, best practices, that planning staff thinks are useful, that so, you know, just putting that out there, that there are, if the prohibition areas are the issue, that there are still general updates that we think are worth considering. Alternatively, an ordinance that includes the proposed general updates to the short-term rental license program and only includes one of the two prohibition areas, if that is the desire, or any other option determined by city council. So, Letitia helped me put together some actual language for if there is a desire to have a different amended ordinance be proposed at next meeting, that as guidance, if that is the desire of council. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Mayor. Please. I know your staff has put a ton of time in that, into this issue, and I absolutely respect that, and I'm appreciative to everyone on our staff that has had something to do with this. Ms. Block, are there other municipalities that have either studied or looked into the possibilities of having short-term rentals zoned in certain areas of the town as we would zone our industrial areas, as we would zone anything else like business, certain businesses in certain areas? Could we possibly zone in where we would like to possibly have short-term rentals? I think that the people who do own short-term rentals, I do think they take extra special care of their homes or the rental properties. And at times, I'm pretty sure, I'm certain, that short-term rentals bring some type of investment into the neighborhood. I would like to see, my personal, personal opinion, I would like to see some short-term rentals possibly be utilized as an economic development tool to encourage investing in our neighborhoods. Are there other municipalities that has looked into zone, putting short-term rentals into certain neighborhoods, zone them in certain areas? To me, it makes sense to possibly put them in neighborhoods surrounding Spooky Nook, neighborhoods that are being redeveloped by possible, possible North Hamilton Crossing, just to get some revitalization going in those neighborhoods.
So, Councilmember, that's not something I have researched, or what I hear you saying...
And I'm sorry I brought it up to you here.
It's okay. I mean, what I hear you saying is, instead of looking at prohibited areas, how we looked at communities, it just allows it in certain zoning districts as opposed to making a prohibition. That's not something I've looked into. I'm not sure if that's something that the planning department did in their research project.
It is. It is. And that is something that we could do. I think our license program operates like a land use regulation, similar to zoning. It just has, it's kind of a hybrid model. And so, what we're proposing is that it is basically permitted, you know, in most areas except for the places that residents have said that they don't want it. We could tighten that up more and be more targeted on where they're allowed. That would just be more restrictive to short-term rentals than what we're proposing.
I don't think I'm looking for necessarily restrictions. I think what I'm looking at is the possibilities of taking the positives of short-term rentals and placing them where it can be beneficial to our whole city. And I'll stop there.
Well, yeah, and if they are absolutely permitted by Spooky Nook and along North Hamilton Crossing, so, there may be something we'd want to talk about if that's, if there's a desire to encourage that. If you're not thinking about discouraging it elsewhere, you could, that is a possibility. It's just not the feedback we heard from people. We didn't hear overwhelming amount of residents and property owners asking for greater restrictions in most areas in our community.
Took me a while to think of that, so, sorry. But I think I would like to possibly look into that.
I think that might be a good thing to, like, talk about as a possible, you know, incentive.
Mr. Mayor. Please. Liz, thank you. I'll echo Councilman Lauer's comments. I know staff's been working really hard, but thank you for being receptive to the residents, and I'm sure the Highland Park folks and the rest of the neighborhoods appreciate the amount of time that our staff has put in to listen to you all and try to figure this out. Liz, I got a question. Let's see, whether it is permitted, prohibited, or conditional use. Can you give me an example of what a conditional use could be?
What that process would look like for a short-term rental?
Yeah.
So, if it's conditionally, if we made it a conditional use, whether it's in certain neighborhoods or in certain zoning districts or citywide, it basically says that it would need to be a public hearing process so that it's not, it's neither prohibited nor permitted by right. We look at, there's nine criteria to determine if this specific proposal is appropriate. The, it then involves, you know, a public notification to people within 500, property owners within 500 feet, and then a six-week process that goes to Planning Commission and City Council. And it's something that we do regularly. You see them come. We're very comfortable with that process. One of the reasons, as we started this program, as we researched in 2018, 2019, that we didn't decide to do that, is that one of the things we learned from other cities was that if you make the process kind of burdensome, property owners will try to avoid the process and hide the short-term rental. Like, if you don't, because the way the listings work, they don't show the address, they don't show the exact location, they just show pictures. So, then they don't show pictures of the exterior, and then it becomes an enforcement issue. So, it really is the basic, you know, it becomes a more time-consuming enforcement process. That might be, but we do that all the time. We have plenty of conditional uses. It might be the right thing to do. It's just the license program, from a staff perspective, has been working well because we want people to give us their emergency contact information. We have good, we are able to work on, you know, with people when there are problems.
So, this could be neighborhood-specific from a conditional use standpoint?
Neighborhood or zoning district. Given the limited areas that have requested more stringent feedback at this point, staff would say it might make more sense to do it as a neighborhood overlay essentially, because there's so many properties in our community zoned R1, which is what these two neighborhoods are zoned. It would be a very wide group of properties in that zoning district. But, anything is, whatever you all prefer to do.
Well, yeah, I just really struggling with this one. And I told a few of those folks out there that this was going to be very difficult because I can see both sides, and it's going to be really hard to be receptive to both sides on this. I see the value of Airbnbs. They can be a benefit to the community. I mean, it's somebody's source of income sometimes. They got to be the nicest-looking property on the street, because if it's not, they're not going to make any money. So, the other side of this is, I just really struggle telling someone what they can and can't do with their homes. I mean, we have laws in place for everybody. You know, what we're doing with the Airbnb situation, I feel we should also be doing with the rentals around town. And we've got a lot of problems with a lot of the renters, rental properties around town. So, if we really get specific, I hope we also include the rental properties that are not short-term rental as well, because that's where a bulk of the problems are coming from. And on the other end, I understand Highland Park's heartburn with this. I do. I have listened to all of you. I have read all of your emails. I understand how you feel. So, I'm not sure how council's going to want to proceed. I really like the conditional use. I just can't favor a citywide ban. I don't think that's the right path to go. I think there's some other options, you know, we can discuss. I do want to note that the proposed laws or regulations, I like that, and I hope council can perhaps vote on those separately. I think that will protect the neighborhoods that you guys asked for better protection. I think Liz's staff delivered that, and I endorse some of those new rules. I think those are great. It's a good starting point. Protects the neighborhoods even more moving forward, and I think that's what we're looking for too. So, that's why I'm out with this. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
House Member, now.
Liz, on the bar chart that you showed us for the 17 neighborhoods, and we saw that Prospect Hill, which of course encompasses the new Spooky Nook complex and things, the others, as you said, are variables. How confident are we that we've captured all short-term rental properties as far as, I'll call them, being registered and licensed in the city? Would you say we're at 80% as roughhouse? And I understand it's a nebulous number, but are we, how close to 100% are we as far as registrations of those, what you would call, we would call, refer to as Airbnbs, vacation rentals or short-term rentals? How close?
I think we're about 80% registered. We, a couple, a few times a year, we look through the listings and reach out proactively. And then, of course, if we get complaints on one, you know, the rules are very much written at this point to protect from problems and have, you know, and so, you know, the focus is if there's one that's causing a problem in the community, you know, that we have, that we have the tools to address it. So, we, of course, get more aggressive when there's, you know, an illegal one and the neighbors are concerned.
Thank you. And again, to compliment your staff, Liz, you and your team, all members of the city that have had input on this legislation and the work in front of us, especially this evening, we really, really appreciate everything that everyone has done. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Liz, what is the consequence? So, if there is a short-term rental that the police find out about or you get calls, what's the consequence?
If they're creating problems in the neighborhood, there's a four-step process that includes fines and suspensions. You get, there's like a warning, then a fine, then a fine and a suspension, and then, you know, fine and a revocation of it, essentially, is the process that we, it just, we have to have a steady staff person be able to document the issue, to be able to go through that process. I will say, my experience, we have a handful of properties that are kind of known entities that we've had different issues with, and we've been able to, even though we haven't been able to, we haven't had to, however you want to phrase it, send formal violation letters, have lots of phone calls and emails with people if there have been problems, and the property owners have been very responsive.
So, if there are no problems, then they could exist and you don't know about them?
Other than the few times we look at, you know, the listings throughout the year. Yeah.
Okay. And it would be...
So if there is a short-term rental that the police find out about, or you get calls, what's the consequence?
If they're creating problems in the neighborhood, there's a four-step process that includes fines and suspensions. You get, there's like a warning, then a fine, then a fine and a suspension, and then, you know, fine and a revocation of it, essentially, is the process that we, it just, we have to have a steady staff person be able to document the issue, to be able to go through that process. I will say, my experience, we have a handful of properties that are kind of known entities that we've had different issues with, and we've been able to, even though we haven't been able to, we haven't had to, however you want to phrase it, send formal violation letters, have lots of phone calls and emails with people if there have been problems, and the property owners have been very responsive.
So if there are no problems, then they could exist and you don't know about them?
Other than the few times we look at, you know, the listings throughout the year. Yeah.
Okay. And it would be no different if there were an exception made for the two neighborhoods that are requesting it? Is there, does it up the penalty if they are precluded from having any short-term rental? It doesn't even have to be a problem, but if a neighbor were to report to you or the city, there's a short-term rental?
The process would be the same, but it would be a much clearer violation. You know, if we, if we saw one in, that was operating in Highland Park or Hickory Woods, and we knew they weren't supposed to be operating, you know, it would be a much more direct, you know, approach. Because a lot of times I operate under the assumption, oh, they maybe don't know about our program. So it's a letter, like with the application. Obviously, that's not how we would handle it if it was in a prohibited area. It would be a different conversation.
And you would ask them to stop? I mean, the fine would be, you can no longer have a short-term rental?
Right. And then if they continue to violate that, then they'd be, start getting the fines.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Liz, again, thank you to you and your staff for putting all this together and spending so much time on this.
Of course.
Topic, as Mike said, it has been a difficult one. I see on this chart that Highland Park has five rentals in their neighborhood now. How does that affect if this were to pass?
Well, there's five in the whole neighborhood, three in the prohibition area because two of them are on Eaton Avenue, which is, Eaton and Main are not part of the prohibition boundary proposed. They would be, they would be allowed to continue to operate unless they fell out of good standing with our, with our regulations.
Mr. Mayor.
House Mayor Pullman.
Liz, on the police report with the six reports over at Hickory Woods that they had there, is that, that was the same address, right?
Yes.
So why would they still have a license if it's, is there a, have they been fined?
They have a license because they self-address the issue. They, they worked very hard to get rid of the problem tenant.
Okay. And I know on an Airbnb, normally if the tenant is a bad tenant, they get a bad rating, and most Airbnbs won't rent to them. So I'm sure that's pretty much how it works, if I'm not mistaken. So that's kind of plus. I mean, again, I want to thank, you know, thank you and your staff for doing everything. And I want to thank everybody for their input on this matter. Had a lot of calls, yeah, we've had a lot of tough decisions to make. And I have to say that everybody's been very respectful on this. No matter how we vote, it's a no-win situation, somebody's going to be mad. So, but we have to look at this strong. With that being said, I really don't like adding ordinances. I've said that before. We have, what, over 400 ordinances again, for homeowners, again, on the books right now, correct?
We have 400 pages in our zoning ordinance. Our residential design standards are probably, like, there are a lot of rules. I told you guys to say, like, we regulate where people can park their RVs and boats. Like, we have a lot of regulation, you know, for people.
And it's just another rule that we're adding on. And I don't like the idea of telling people where to go spend their money, you know, it goes somewhere else out of town. And I'm really having a problem with people asking other neighborhoods to join in this ban. And I appreciate Highland Park and Hickory Woods. These are great little neighborhoods, tight-knit, beautiful neighborhoods. But, and I appreciate your, you know, your fight for this, but I think to make everybody join this is not what we want. That's what kind of, I don't know, burns me up a little bit. But I think about the, when you have, you have a neighbor that has a party, these people, they said, I've heard that there's parties and stuff and strange people in the neighborhood. But, I mean, I have, I live in a neighborhood that has, again, Airbnb two doors down from me. I have neighbors that have some really good parties, and, you know, there's 40 cars, 50 cars in the neighborhood, and they'll have people there all weekend. Am I worried about safety a little bit? Well, you kind of have to be in a way. I mean, I have a special needs son, he's 32 years old, I'm legal guardian. He's friendly to everybody. So I worry about that, you know? So he's like a little kid going out there. He'll be your best buddy. And, you know, somebody could walk away with him. And I worry about that. And I even worry about that with, but, you know, I trust that there's good people in the neighborhood. And I also, you know, if a house came up for sale next door to my house, I can't vet that person who's going to be there. You could get a bad neighbor for long term. You're going to have bad people in an Airbnb. And I'm sorry, I mean, it's going to happen, but I think the Airbnb network may take over and say, this person's not renting back here again. I just, I really have a hard time, again, putting more onto the ownership, you know, what you, you know, what you can do with your home. I think we have to really look at this. I do also think that we need to divide this on a vote between neighborhoods instead of combining them, because they're apple and oranges to me. I mean, I think we got to look at the HOA, and then we shouldn't be voting on these together. If they're going to do this as a neighborhood and you want us to vote on it, I really think it should be Highland Park has one vote, and Hickory Woods has another vote. And, you know, with that, and unfortunately, if we have to hold this vote, I won't be here at the next meeting, and I really want to be, and I would like to delay it a little bit. But I just want everybody to know that it's, it's a tough situation. And I get it, you love your neighborhood. And I love walking around. I don't live in Highland. I live over in Taft Place, Governor's Hill. And, but I love Highland. I walk around there and drive through it, and it's a beautiful neighborhood. Just love the history of the neighborhood. And I get it, what you're looking for. But I think, I think might be overreacting a little bit about what people are doing. I think people that rent these Airbnbs, they're a little bit, you know, they're, they're here at Spooky Nook, and they're, they don't want to be at a hotel with their family. They want to be at a hotel, they want to feel like they're at home. They're gone a lot at these tournaments and stuff. And I've never stayed in Airbnb, and I'm, I don't own anything, I don't even think I know anybody that owns one. But I know people that stayed in them, and they did it because, you know, they travel a lot, and they want to be with their family and friends. And a hotel's a hard place to do that, and these kind of feel like home. So on that side, I look at that side of it's good. And then I look at your side too. So it's a tough decision. So, but I think it needs to be split. All right? Thanks, Liz, for your help again. And appreciate everybody out there for stepping up and sticking up for your neighborhood.
I'm going to say just a couple of words, and again, make seven out of seven, thank you, Liz, for what your department does. We see the Planning Commission, we see it, ordinance review, we see it all over the place. But the market, the style, and the look of these short-term stays, places, hotel, Airbnb, short-term rental, is still kind of in a, it's like an undeveloped Polaroid to a degree, for those of you who remember Polaroid cameras. Hotels aren't built yet. I mean, a lot of them aren't built. Will that change the scene of this? Possibly. So I want to hear everybody speak, myself, before, you know, I tell people what I'm going to vote or whatever. I still think about important things like homeownership, but I want to hear from you folks out there. I think we all talked, if I'm not mistaken? Okay. Any other questions for Liz, or other statements right now? Okay.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, I mean, there was, the last slide that was on there was requesting direction on that issue. So right now, we're scheduled to vote on Agenda Item Number 10. So are we, are we going to give direction at that time after Audience of Citizens? Is that?
Well, I think after Audience of Citizens, we need to talk a little bit more. That'd be okay?
Okay. That sounds good.
We'll go from there. Okay, Audience of Citizens, individuals who wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda, or may reserve the right to actually speak when the item is up for a vote on the council floor. All individuals who attend to address City Council are required to sign this blue public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. And most of these have to involve, they do involve short-term rentals. But there's somebody here who signed up for University Commerce Park as a subject to be addressed. Does that person wish to speak at this point in time? There Douglas Swain here? You wish to speak at this time, sir? Or do you want to?
It's on Decock.
Paco Jenna? Okay. All right. Okay, we're going to go right into short-term rentals. Let's go right in order of those who signed. Marilyn Tunat. Good evening. Your name, your address, please.
My name's Marilyn Tunat. My address is 2 East Persimmon Drive. I'm the president of the Hickory Woods Homeowners Association. I was here last month. I was greatly impressed with our young man again tonight, as I was with the very young man last month. There are very good programs that we have going on. With that being said, Hickory Woods is, in fact, an HOA, so we are different than some of the other neighborhoods. We are established within the Ohio Revised Code. I'd like to remind everybody that our deed restrictions are enforceable. When the people buy a home in our HOA, they are made aware of the rules and regulations, the covenants, prior to signing a final agreement to purchase that home. They are aware of it. Ours has been, since 1996, I believe, established, but 2012 was when the restrictions did go in. I do want to say that we are governed in part by the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 5312. And under the Ohio Revised Code of 5312.13, all owners in possession and control of an ownership interest shall comply with all covenants, conditions, and restrictions set forth in any recorded planning community governing document, as well as with the owner's association's bylaws and rules as lawfully amended. Our amendment happened in 2012. Everyone was aware of it. As I said before, we've taken a petition. We have, other than people that have, that were in the hospital or had immediately passed away at the time, we had about 85% of people that were able to sign that petition stating that they do not want the five that are there to be grandfathered in because they came in incorrectly. I did tell you that we did win on summary judgment on that in a court hearing. We are still waiting for the finality of that, those issues to be done. But within 45 days, those homes should no longer be able to be leased out. They are not considerably, I mean, they're not really being led by Airbnb rules. We have short-term rental people that are staying there for a month at a time. I've had to, still within the last month, have people removed for not following the restrictions, even though they're written out for people that, you know, you can't, our streets are narrow. We couldn't get a fire truck down the street safely, or an emergency vehicle safely, if there's a number of cars parked along the street. And they've, they've worked pretty diligently. But the one thing with the six calls to the one house, I want to go back to that, the police did not respond to that for an hour and 20 minutes after the first call was made. That's not considered to be an adequate response to me. It was a weekend, you know, a weeknight, what are we supposed to do in that kind of respect? We were afraid for the people that were there. We were afraid for the people around the house. We didn't know how it would escalate. So that broke down in that situation. But it should be noted that in Ohio, it's well-established that restrictive covenants are established plans for the development of a tract of property that make the property attractive to the people that are buying it. That's why my husband and I selected that home, that lot, in your city, but because of the HOA covenants, rules, and restrictions, as did all the other homeowners. And there are 74 homes. Five of those were, the last five that were sold were through the investment purchases. So 69 people made that decision consciously. They knew what those rules were when they went in. And they are enforceable. And like I said, when they challenged us, we countersued back, and we did win on summary judgment for that. So I'd like for you to take that into consideration for us, that we need for these five homes that are currently right in a row, right down the street, right all next to each other, that those not be allowed to be grandfathered in, and that you do take it as a separate issue from the other. I believe in free enterprise. I'm a, I'm a person that believes that, you know, we should have great business practices. And I think Airbnbs, and Verbos, and Cozy Cozy, and all those little, and homeowner things are great for certain places, but not in our, our HOA. Any questions that you might have, I'd be glad to try to answer. Anything tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I see Sandra Armbruster, but did you want to speak now or prior to our vote? Want to speak now? Well, it might, see, what it might, who knows, it might get tabled. Maybe you want to speak, speak now? Up to you. Well, we're going to be talking about this after Audience of Citizens as well. So if you want to make sure you're heard tonight, right now, I'd go up there and talk now.
So I'm Sandy, I'm Sandy Armbruster, 929 Lon, North Lon Avenue. You know, I really appreciate what all of you are doing, and I know that you have everybody's best interests at heart. You have done a lot for our city, you still do, and I do trust you to make the right decisions for all of us. Right now, I'm just speaking on behalf of hundreds of people who have signed the petitions that we would keep Hamilton, keep Hickory, I'm, oh, to keep Highland Park a strong, strong neighborhood city. You know, we're part of the 17-strong membership. We are already strong. We don't need to be stronger. But we're very, very, very happy that we can be a part of it. Now, we did go around, sign petitions. We did this in November when it was freezing cold. We started late. We ran out of time. We had a deadline. We would have had more people who would have signed this petition, I'm sure. Can you hear, am I?
Yes, your mic.
We would have had more people sign this, I'm sure, if we'd had more time. But we're already at 88% of the people who live in the zoned area that we're speaking about, who have signed the petition. You know, a lot of people are afraid to sign a petition. They don't want to put their names on a piece of paper. But they so believed in keeping Airbnbs out of our neighborhood that they went ahead and signed these petitions. Now, I listened to some of you speaking tonight, some of you council members, and I respect you for your opinions, but you don't really, I don't think, understand the anxiety that we have to have Airbnbs in our neighborhood. You know, in my block, I have eight families with children. I really worry about their safety. I worry about my safety. You know, I'm scared a lot of times, thinking of how strangers might be coming, so many different strangers next door to me. You know, sheriff says, it's not when the bad people are coming, it's not if, it's when. You know, are we all going to have to have guns because we're going to be afraid for the safety? But I'm thinking about the children in the neighborhood. You know, a lot of you have spoken that we get to know our neighbors, even when there are people that we don't like, we get to know what they're like, and we can adapt in that manner. I know that you spoke about having, having, getting used to your neighbors. And you do get used to your neighbors, but you get used to the neighbors that are there long-term. You can't get used to knowing what the short-term people are like. You just have to trust that they're going to be all right, but you can't depend on that. Now, one of the things that you have mentioned earlier, you are giving citations to people around this city, but you also, the community center, I was noticing tonight, Community Chest gave money to historic reasons, one of which was having the train station moved. And you got checks for $200,000 toward renovation of the historic train station. Now, you have given, you have shown an emphasis to keep Hamilton, some of history, in Now, you have given, you have shown an emphasis to keep Hamilton, some of history in Hamilton. You've sold 513 for a dollar, or different places in town, you've sold for a dollar. You've wanted them to be historically the same. You are so good that we have so many, I only got 39 seconds. That's so good. Well, I better be quiet. Okay, so here's what I did. I took a picture of signs that are all around Highland Park, and they say, "Historic Highland Park, established 1919, a Hamilton neighborhood." Well, you know, you're interested in keeping some of the history in Hamilton. These signs are all over Highland Park. It's kind of like the proof that we are in historic neighborhood. We want to keep it that way. Okay, now I'm going to run out of time. I wanted you to know, I've lived there for 50 years. I know somebody on every street in Highland Park. I can depend on my neighbors to help me. I don't know who's coming in Airbnbs. So I did write something that I wanted to read, and this is, "What is Highland Park?" It's a safe, friendly neighborhood where friends know, trust, and help one another. It's a neighborhood in which children shovel your snow without being paid, where neighbors bring your trash cans in, where people wave to one another when driving down the street, where you don't have to lock your doors in order to go to your backyards, or to help out a neighbor who lives a few doors down, or just to talk to one of them and go up and down the street and see how they are. Now, we're very concerned about our safety and availability of our excellent police, yeah, concerned about the availability of the police coming.
You kind of start wrapping it up just a second.
So, okay, all right. So here's the deal. I just am asking your support that you would allow us to be a strong, strong Hamilton neighborhood, and we want to not have Airbnbs. We're just talking about our neighborhood. You can have them all around the town, but leave us alone, please. We ask for your support. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank Downey.
I'm sorry, but I think James Downey had to leave just a few minutes ago. Week 86, oldest one in Highland Park. Did he have to leave?
This is, this is the Frank Downey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, and fellow residents. I think what we're discussing tonight is kind of a good problem to have. Who'd have ever thought that 15 years ago, we'd be discussing people coming to this city and not having enough room for them to stay? Who'd have ever imagined that 15 years ago, we were going to hire a city manager who came to this city with a plan that has taken us to where we are now? And that was his strategic plan, to help develop Hamilton and start it on its re-renovation. One of the pillars upon which he based that strategic plan was SenseOfPlace. Kind of an incentive for neighborhoods, or neighborhood residents, to come together, empower themselves, to take control of their neighborhoods, and make them safer, cleaner, and more engaged. This was geared towards the residents of the neighborhood who live in this city 24/7/365. Whatever the outcome of tonight, whether we table it, discuss it, vote on it tonight, I hope that you will take the residents of our neighborhoods into consideration, because I haven't heard much said about them up to this point. We've talked about the investors, we've talked about the pros and the cons, but I think one of the things we've overlooked is the actual residents who live here 365 days a year. They're the primary residents, and I consider them stakeholders in our neighborhoods and in our city. In the past 15 years, I've been connected with SenseOfPlace. I was one of the original members. I now chair Protocol in Lindawald, and I wouldn't give that, I wouldn't give that opportunity up for anything. I wouldn't know all of you people here in this room that I know. I now know people in all 17 of the neighborhoods. I know a lot of the residents in the 17 neighborhoods. Before, I was kind of cloistered in Lindawald. We're a very tight community, and really didn't see much of a reason to ever leave it. I've also learned, in visiting these neighborhoods, there are a lot of great residents in our city. There are also a lot of residents with issues and needs, particularly among the elderly and the special needs. And a lot of these people could be helped, possibly stay in their home a little longer, if neighbors and residents that live close to them can help with a little yard work, a little home repair. As simple as maybe taking their trash bin out on an appropriate night, or the recycle bin out to the curb. You're not going to get this with renters, with short-term rentals, which I, I think all of you know, because I've sent you enough emails and I've talked to Liz, I refer to as transient housing, or mini-hotels. Some of these people just need help with transportation, getting to and from the grocery, going to and from, picking up medical supplies, pharmaceuticals, stuff like that. In a lot of cases, we're known in Lindawald as a porching community. A lot of times, that companionship from other neighbors goes a long way. I'll tell you a very touching story about a young man and his wife, and I think it was their three or four kids, who came into Prospect Hills several years ago. I believe he was of the Mennonite faith. Jason Allgarn and his wife, he bought a home. It was in horrible shape. Neighbors couldn't even believe he bought it. But he got to know them very quickly, not because he went out to meet them, they came to see him and what he was going to do with his property. Jason, through their neighborhood association, he and his family, and I think his three or four daughters, they started a quarterly newsletter. They gave it out to people in Prospect Hill on a regular basis, till the residents became used to this. Jason, through this effort, came to know an older, an elderly lady in the neighborhood who needed help. I think it was the simple, the first time was taking her trash out. He began doing that, he began doing simple home repairs around the house. Eventually ended up this, this woman came to their home every Sunday for Sunday dinner. I don't know if she had family or not, but she must have been very disconnected from them if she did. Jason and his family were there when she died. And I just think that's one of the most touching stories that has come across my desk in the 15 years that I've been involved. And the only thing I'm asking for is that we let the people, and this would probably involve a conditional use, the people who live within 500 feet of these proposed short-term rentals, transient housing, mini-hotels, as I prefer to call them, have a say in them being in their neighborhood. To me, it's the only, to me, it's a simple solution. It would be costly, and it would be time-consuming for the administration here in the city, but I think if the benefits we talk about are as great as we seem to think they're going to be, I think the time and the effort to put into this would be well worth it. I think that's about all I've got to say. I just, up to this point, have not really seen where the neighbors who have to, who are going to be living near these short-term rentals have really been considered in our thought process. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We next have Brenda Oliver.
I'm short. Brenda Oliver, reside at 1153 Stephanie. We also own 202 North Dick Avenue. Thank you for your time this evening, and welcome to the new city manager. Glad to have you here. I spent 30 years servicing the housing needs of the citizens of Hamilton. Highland Park has always been a highly respected neighborhood. Buyers were not only purchasing a house, they were purchasing Highland Park. To allow more short-term rentals would be an insult to these owners. Many, just bouncing around to a couple different points. Many private equity companies are in place here. They're trying to purchase the houses. And when this happens, you can ride through a neighborhood and almost watch the demise on a day-to-day basis. We have national hotel chains, we're lucky enough to have national hotel chains coming to Hamilton. And to think that we're allowing this to compete with these hotels is just sinful. We have 17 neighborhoods. You need to make them strong, one at a time, starting with Highland Park. Thank you.
Jordan Davis is next.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Thanks for having me. My name's Jordan Davis. I live at, oh, sorry, I'm tall. My name's Jordan Davis. I live at 1340 Park Avenue. I live there with my fiance, my two-year-old daughter. My sister lives actually like four or five houses down. I'm a young guy. I moved to Hamilton because there's a lot going on in Hamilton. I'm a welder by trade, and I work 50, 60 hours a week, but I also invest in real estate. I've flipped two houses in Hamilton. I own two rental properties in Colrain, and I own a short-term rental on Gordon Avenue, a stone's throw from Spooky Nook. My, my short-term rental has 25 five-star reviews. I go as far as get my guests cookies and drinks, and I go well and beyond what I'm supposed to do, and I take pride in my property. You know, I give it the best attention and care, as well as my home in Highland Park. So for a young guy, you know, I got to take risks. I'm taking advantage of what Hamilton has done here, with Spooky Nook and everything coming here, to provide my family a better quality of life. So I'm just asking you to vote no on the ban. I'm not scared of people, and I would welcome a short-term rental neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Scott.
Sam Scott, 24 Wellington Court. Thank you to members of council, city manager, and fellow Hamiltonians. I was here just under a month ago, speaking at the first public hearing. And I won't belabor council and Hamiltonians with the same points again, but as Liz showed earlier today, the data unequivocally supports that currently, Airbnbs aren't a problem, specifically in the two areas the legislation deals with tonight. We have no, excuse me, we have no police reports of these incidents. We have no police reports reported of these incidents. We have these hypothetical things that could happen, that might happen, that could potentially happen in other areas, but they haven't happened, certainly not on paper. And my position continues to be, for issues of noise, unkempt lawns, any other of these issues presented, there's existing city ordinances that cover these issues. There's existing processes for nuisance properties. They're already on the books. As Councilman Pullman pointed out, and Liz reaffirmed, we have 400 pages of city ordinances, and we're looking to add additional ordinances. And I believe there were additional ordinances that were proposed at last, last month's meeting regarding facades and the requirement of basements. So I just, I just ask, as a rhetorical question, where this ends? I understand the position of Liz and council, that it's not practical, not a practical solution for Highland Park to have an HOA implemented. As the first speaker that came up tonight, sorry, I didn't catch your name, just as she stated, she made a conscious decision to move into an HOA, which, for the purposes of it, I do believe that it's a different matter for Hickory Woods. But just as she deliberately moved into an HOA, I deliberately didn't move into an HOA. I don't want that level of control. However, a vote yes tonight would assert that level of control over a singular neighborhood in Hamilton, and set the precedent moving forward, that other neighborhoods could do the same, with other issues. And that's not what I signed up for when I moved to this city. I also would like to make a comment regarding legislating against strangers. At one point, everyone in this town is a stranger. Not everyone is from Hamilton. That's a good thing. We need new people coming into the city. We want new people coming into the city. Everyone at one point or another was a stranger. So to classify everyone as transients and these terms, and especially as a 20, I'm 26 now, I've lived in Hamilton 20-plus years. Outside of college, and some years in downtown Cincinnati, I've lived here my entire life. The idea that members of the community are now telling me that I'm not welcome in certain neighborhoods in town is deeply offensive, to my very core. I think it's ridiculous, quite honestly. And I think it's indicative of what this shows to the outside world, outside of Hamilton, that Hamilton's afraid of strangers coming in. We don't know who they are. We don't know what they may be, so we'll just categorize them as bad from the beginning. We won't take into account that that could be just as good of a person as my existing neighbor. And I think that that's an important consideration to make. But finally, I ask that, while this legislation concerns smaller portions of the town, two specific neighborhoods, I ask that all members of council remember that you're up here on behalf of all Hamiltonians, and not subsets of Hamilton, to vote on behalf of all Hamiltonians, and enforce the goodwill and the continuation of the city that all Hamiltonians see, and not to give preferential treatment to certain neighborhoods, and to go and delve into what, quite frankly, is the business of HOAs. Thank you to Liz and her team for all the hard work, and all members of council for being receptive and hearing differing opinions. I think it's been extremely beneficial to hear both sides of the argument, and I definitely don't envy anyone making a vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. James Downey, did I hear that he left?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then next is Greg Irwin.
I greatly appreciate the opportunity to address city council, and I will say, I'm very proud of Hamilton City Council. I almost talked or communicated with everybody up here, and thank you, guys. You guys are so smart and so clever, and I really appreciate that. Somebody was talking about 15 years ago, how far we've come and where we are now. I'm mainly thinking about where we're going to be in 15 years from now. Fortunately, it hasn't been a lot of problems, but I'm, I'm looking ahead. Mr. Councilman Pullman was saying, we're weak, maybe we need Airbnbs where it can have a positive effect. I believe Highland Park, originally, they said, a successful place where successful Hamiltonian can build his dream home. It's developed into a dream community, and I don't think it needs help developing any further. And like one of the Realtors said, you know, you see what happens when people coming in and the families moving out, the demise of a neighborhood. I don't think it's needed in Hamilton, in Highland Park. Highland Park is a very unique neighborhood. As you all know, it was the first planned neighborhood. I remember, I think, the mayor saying it's kind of a dual neighborhood of Highland Park, I mean, of Hamilton. And, you know, with, homes are very close, it's old style, it's very different. I can be opening my car door, and the porch is five or six feet away. So it's very close, it's a family style, and we, does this feel, and I'm not so much talking about the safety, I know a lot of people talked about that, it's the neighbor. A neighbor is invaluable. I am a property investor. I invested in one, my home. I'm not here so much to make money, I'd like for the property to go up, but I invested in it because it's a quality of life. Some of the older folks, you know, just you get nervous. Mr. Downey had to leave earlier, he, he's eighty-six years old, he's our oldest, I think, resident. And it's a quality of life. We don't need to be revitalized. I, some of the discussions, when we say it's residential, it's not business. And that's a really important point. And the point was made though, it's already business. When you have rentals, you know, not long-term rentals, that is a business. It's a rental company, you're paying, you're right. I was corrected. It has been business in the sense like that for a long time. But let's just work, look at the word residential. A resident, a resident of, you're a resident of Hamilton, we're a resident of Highland Park. Residential, it's where the neighbors live, residents. If you go down to Gettlenburg and stay overnight for one night, you tell, am I a resident of Gettlenburg? No. Residential means it's for neighbors, neighbors who live there for a long time. It's great what people are doing here. I'm not, Airbnbs are needed. We need to uplift certain areas of Hamilton, we need to make the right decision. We don't, I don't feel we need it in Highland Park, we really need it in other areas. So it can really help bring, bring up areas. I think what we're looking at, I'm going to move, move along, the individual rights, a community rights, and city rights. We're not trying to add on more laws, we want to keep what we had. We thought we had a residential neighborhood. And then it kind of became, no, it's, it's not just residential like you thought, and things change. We're not trying to put restrictions. We thought we had this. We're trying to keep what we had, we're not trying to impose this on more people. It will have an adverse effect. I don't know what regulation, number five, whatever it is. What is an adverse effect on a neighborhood? If families move out, if every block has a couple of neighbor, a couple Airbnb's on it, isn't that an adverse effect on a neighborhood? Fifteen years from now, when Marriott Homes and Villas are coming in, let's, let's have it, let's be looking ahead. I, I just think Highland Park doesn't need, you don't need a few more, fifteen or twenty more homes, go into hotels. I think people are worried because it'll spread. That's, that's really what it's about. One size doesn't fit all. It's an overwhelming majority, three hundred and forty-two homes out of approximately four hundred. I want you to hear that. It's an overwhelming majority of what your residents wanted for our community. One size doesn't fit all, seventeen communities, I don't think will, will be emboldened as we have been. It's an older community, the younger kids are coming in, that's great, they think different. We're not trying to restrict what, what you do, we're trying to maintain what we have. If I could just end with, I know you guys are very clever. A clever person knows how to solve a problem, but a wise person knows how to avoid it. Albert Einstein. And I look at the council and I hope that you can look ahead fifteen years from now and please be wise. Please let our, let us maintain our neighborhood for neighbors. Thank you very much.
Lorraine Irwin, please.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Irwin. I live at 451 Emerson Avenue in Hamilton, specifically Highland Park. I know we have talked a lot about the effects of short-term rentals and basically how people are afraid, the people that are coming in. The one thing that I think we're forgetting is that the short-term rentals are vacant. They're vacant a lot of the time. I would say the one on our neighborhood, in my eyes, stays vacant almost seventy-five percent of the time. That to me is more of a concern than the type of people that are, we're supposedly scared of. I don't like vacant houses sitting on my block because it just leads to perhaps it being broken into, that type of thing. I don't want thieves on my neighborhood. I would rather, like you're saying, have neighbors, but that is something that I think we have not talked about at all. I don't know how you feel about having vacant houses on your neighborhood half the time, three-fourths of the time. Another thing that I just wanted to also bring up was that the people that are coming in are commercial owners. We supposedly are a residential area and according to the audience, I thought that residential meant that you don't have businesses in your neighborhood. And that's one thing that I think is the most concerning to me. You know, I don't want a McDonald's down the block from me and obviously I don't want any other business on my, in my residential neighborhood. And as far as I'm concerned, we don't want to change anything, we just want to remain a residential area. So anyway, those are the two points that I, I think are the most important. We forgot about the fact that those short-term rentals stay vacant most of the time, which is a concern that we haven't brought up before. And also the fact that we don't want to change, we want to stay a residentially zoned neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Travis Kron, did I pronounce your name right? Travis?
Kron, but.
Kron, I'm sorry.
Everybody gets it wrong. Travis Kron, 3610 Milligan. We've heard a lot tonight about the petitions against this in Highland Park. I just wanted to bring up a couple of points from the Highland Park Residential Association Facebook page. These are actual residents who have made, taken the time to put this out there. Are you regulating people coming to the houses and requesting signatures? I've had two people stop by and ask me for, to sign and pretty much demand that I sign when I say no. I know an elderly couple that felt compelled, compelled to sign the petition, but don't really understand what they were signing. They were told a lot of scenarios and essentially bullied into signing. I'm not saying that this is what happened with every petition member who signed, but it definitely did happen. These are out there. I am a local citizen. My wife and I invest upwards of seven figures now into Hamilton because we care about Hamilton. We want to see the best for Hamilton. We're worried about vacancies in Highland Park. I can guarantee you that if you push local investors like myself out, these houses that we buy and we get them, when they go to Sheriff's Sales, when they go to auctions, are going to be vacant. They might not, they're not going to be vacant for two or three days between short-term rentals. They're going to be vacant for months, years, and that's when you get real vagrancy, real crime, that's when you get the real problems. We are required to be short-term rental owners, that we secure these houses, that we maintain these houses. You want to maintain a neighborhood? You have somebody come and invest and take the time and put the money into it. You don't have a house sit empty. That's when, that's when it brings down the value of the neighborhood, that's when it brings the neighborhood down. These people that are upset that we're coming in, we're not trying to push you out, we're not trying to tell you how to live your lives, we're trying to live our lives, we're trying to help the neighborhood. And that's all we've ever been doing. And I don't think it's fair to push regulations onto us that aren't even there. I love Hamilton, I live here, that's why I invest here, and I want to see the best for Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That takes care of audience of citizens. Okay, takes care of audience of citizens. Do we want to revisit amongst council if there's any kind of other possible action that council may want to take or let it go until it's for us for a vote? Number ten on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I really think we need to separate this out. Again, as I previously stated, you know, planning has put a lot of work into strengthening some laws. I'm not sure, do these laws that have been strengthened, does this also cover just non-short-term rentals? Because if, if we're going to do this, we need to do it for everybody. Because this is our time to, to really protect all neighborhoods.
So there's two concepts that are in the proposed ordinance and agenda item number ten. There are a number of general updates to the short-term rental program. And then there's also the two prohibited areas, which is Hickory Woods and Highland Park. So what I hear you saying is separating out those votes related to the general updates of short-term rentals and then their prohibition, is that accurate?
Yeah.
I'd like to proceed now with the prohibitions in just those two areas, Highland Park and Hickory Woods. That's just, I kind of think we got to lean towards that the other neighborhoods open. Revisit the issue possibly later. I, I'd like to proceed with, with voting on, on number ten tonight. Highland Park is unique and I've got reasons why, I think why, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'd like to proceed also, but I do have a question to either you or Liz. If this were to be voted down, that doesn't mean it's dead, right? That just means that it goes back, Liz, that just means it goes back to you to revise it, or that just opens the whole discussion again, is that right? If we vote yes, it's a done deal forever that can never be changed, addressed, anything because it is so new. If we vote no, it can be reviewed again, right?
Absolutely, it can definitely be reviewed. And I think that if it's voted no tonight as proposed in agenda item number ten, I think that that's what Director Hayden was kind of looking to, to understand, okay, if it gets voted down tonight, would council like to see a different version of agenda item number ten with other concepts that council would have the pleasure to approve? Because I, I think that there's consensus among the necessity for some of these general updates. And so I, I think that staff is still recommending to, you know, proceed with some of that. But if council's pleasure is to want to consider some other concepts, we can do that as well. So I guess it could be voted down tonight, agenda item number ten, and I think staff will be looking to say, council, what is your pleasure related to the, the substance of what's in agenda item number ten? Is that clear?
So it doesn't kill it? It just means that we're not, because the other thing I'm completely opposed to, and I don't know if that's what anyone's thinking, I don't want to rewrite things here tonight sitting. I can't stand when we do that. I'd rather have it voted no and either come to planning and talk about it, because to me, we have sixteen other neighborhoods we need to take into consideration. This is like opening a Pandora's Box as far as the rest of the city goes. So I'm not saying I absolutely can't stand it, but I think that we, it's proven in the eleventh hour that there's a lot more research we need to do because there's a lot more neighborhoods that are going to come and want to try to do the same thing.
And that's, that's the recommendation from staff, it's not, if it, if there is direction that we come at a different council meeting to address that. And you can say you want to send it to, you know, back to Planning Commission for, you know, review, you can say you want to send it to ORC, whatever council's direction is, we will follow that.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Pullman?
So if it's voted down, Liz, they could, Highland Park could jump or Hickory Woods could jump right back in, we could do it pretty quickly to do separate voting on there? It's, it's not a long process?
No, I mean, if you just wanted to separate out what we have or make minor amendments to what we have, we could be back next meeting or if you would like to wait a month so that everyone could be here, whatever that is. If you wanted to do something more substantial, like make it a conditional use or, or, or talk about long-term rentals, I, that would be a much longer, well, conditionally should be a longer process. Doing something with long-term rentals probably should be a separate conversation.
Okay, that's fine. Is there, is there long-term rentals in Highland Park?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, because that's what I want to make sure that they still had a voice on that, that they, you know, that they could come right back and not wait a year to do it. And it's something that could be a pretty quick process. And, I mean, because everything is important on this. So, again, I think combining them is kind of the downfall of this. So in my opinion, I just think it probably still needs to be separated. Like Carla said, we don't need to sit here and rewrite the, everything tonight because it's, that just doesn't, that's not a hundred percent the way to do it, in my opinion.
Staff agrees.
It's not, it's not accurate. So thank you. Mr. Mayor? So if I'm hearing this correctly, then we should just make a motion to table this and not vote on this at all? Typically, if it's got a, I mean, if we're voting no, then it's going back down somewhere else for review.
Well, doesn't table it mean that it just comes back as written and we vote on later? Unless we give you direction tonight? That's why I just think.
They would have to wait longer.
My opinion is you voted no with the understanding that we will meet with planning.
Yeah, we, if it's the, if the direction is no tonight on the holistic and then we could bring back three different pieces, that could be done quickly, I think.
It's a way to do it.
Or two different pieces.
Sorry.
Please go ahead.
Just, just to be clear, so a no vote is no exemptions or no exceptions tonight, it goes back and is rewritten.
Yeah, you would have three different staff, staff reports with different pieces. Unless you're, or if you're asking us to make different changes beyond separating them out, that's another thing.
Can you say three, you're saying long-term rentals, Highland and Hickory?
We do not have anything about long-term rentals.
Okay, what's, when you say?
Short-term rentals and then Hickory Woods and Highland Park. I have heard a desire from council to talk, to talk about Hickory Woods and Highland Park separately. I think from a staff perspective, I think we see value in treating them equally since we can't regulate HOA regulations. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but.
That's correct. We wouldn't be getting into private HOA dispute matters.
Personally, I don't think, I don't think the HOA at Hickory Woods is any kind of problem with this legislation. It was just like added on. I don't think it changes anything they've got going on based upon the fact that they have a homeowners association. Is this an absolutely perfectly drafted ordinance? I don't know if I've ever seen one before. Does this might need to be tweaked a little bit? There are some things I'd like to see a little bit different, but I think in the big picture, I would like to proceed with this. I mean, there's certain scenarios that maybe we got to think about. But I think the vast majority of what we got here is something I think we should vote on personally, I think. But, you know, we're here to figure out what we're going to do next, whether we go to the consent agenda or what, but. I don't hear a clamoring one way or the other right now, but I do hear a few this way and a few that way, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I spoke at our last meeting and, and I'll go back to what I shared three, four weeks ago. I feel strongly that the Highland Park residents have spoken and asked council for, for an ordinance that supports their residential neighborhood. And I feel strongly that if the other sixteen neighborhoods in the city of Hamilton wish to organize and come to us and say, we wish this, we wish that, whatever, whatever that language may be, whatever they're wishing, that's why we were elected, is to represent our residents. In my prayer tonight, I talked about residents and I talked about safety, I talked about quality of life places. Frank Downey spoke to us about sense of place. In my fourteen and a half years of service on this council, my objectives and goals, strategies. and tactics and measures have all been for our residents and our businesses. And I feel strongly that if we don't position ourselves tonight and take effect, as the mayor said, the HOA is part and parcel to itself, it's, it's not really part of this, what they're, what we're being asked for tonight, but it's to pay attention to the 100-year-old wonderful place, Highland Park, at this time. I live in Washington. Eric Lou's in Governor's Hill. Pat, you're in Columbia, New London. Joel, you're part of Washington. Carl, Washington. Susan, New London. Michael, Washington. If those, if our neighborhoods come to us and ask us respectfully to do something that the entire neighborhood agrees upon, I think it's incumbent on us to listen to them, as we should be listening to our neighbors and our friends in Highland Park tonight, and, and, and vote appropriately, vote, vote the way we feel, all seven of us vote the way we feel, but they've asked us for this legislation. And again, the HOA, in my opinion, is a no-brainer. So I'm ready to vote tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
House Member Lauer. So, I'm really struggling with if we vote yes and no, and not tabling this, I'm, I'm really struggling to understand what the difference is between voting no and tabling this to get better language, to get more, to possibly consider some aspects of zoning areas for short-term rentals. Help me understand this a little better, as far as, I think that there needs to be some other language, but if I vote no, will you go back to the drawing board, is that what I'm hearing?
So, Mr. Mayor. If I may, so what, what is before City Council tonight is to update our zoning ordinances with general updates related to our short-term rental program. And that same ordinance is also to prohibit short-term rentals in Hickory Woods and Highland Park. If it is council's pleasure to approve those general updates, and also to prohibit short-term rentals in Hickory Woods and in Highland Park, then council should go ahead and proceed with that vote this evening. If there is a pleasure on council to consider something different than is what before council on Agenda Item 10, then the language is, which is on the screen, to be able to say, we want to go ahead and postpone the motion related to adopting the ordinance and direct staff to do X, direct staff to take this matter back to Planning Commission, to only approve, you know, propose to consider the general updates to short-term rentals with no prohibitions, whatever that direction is, that motion could contain that. So I think that that's really what staff is looking for, is to say, what the pleasure, we've heard lots of different voices, you know, Vice Mayor Pullman was saying he would like for us to have three separate ordinances essentially on, for council's consideration, to have an ordinance related to the general updates on short-term rentals, to have another ordinance that will consider the prohibition in Highland Park, another ordinance to consider the prohibition in Hickory Woods. Staff is, is not, you know, you know, recommending any of those options, we're looking just for a direction to say, what is the pleasure from City Council?
I, I would like to see some changes, I, to be very frank with you, I, I think that, first of all, I don't see the demise of our neighborhoods. The only demise I think can happen is the division amongst us, not council, every, every citizen. The he. I struggle to say no, because I believe that the, the residents in, in Highland Park have spoken, but I am absolutely not, I, I, I'm for short-term rentals in, in areas that will, that will benefit Hamilton. So you're telling me to vote no, but yet I, I respect the residents of Highland Park, and the HOA takes care of itself, in my opinion, not to leave, not to leave Hickory Woods out, but. So I, I'm confused where I, where I should go. I'd like to see some, some things change, but I also respect the residents of Highland Park, Hickory Woods. I don't know, so help me, guide me a little bit. I have to say no?
No, you don't, you don't, staff is not, is not recommending you vote for yes or no.
I feel like to get change, I have to vote for something that I, I would, I would vote yes for.
Before City, City Council tonight is to decide whether you want to either table Agenda Item Number 10 at a different council meeting and tell us what you, what you want on that, or to go ahead and vote on Agenda Item Number 10, and I heard, that's what Mayor Moller is proposing, just to go ahead and vote on Agenda Item Number 10 to see where all seven of, you know, if you come down on that, and if, if the vote comes out a particular way, then you will give us direction as to what you want to see. That's what the mayor is, is proposing that we, we do tonight, and that may be the, the best option, since we're hearing so many, you know, different positions right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, I've listened a lot, I've spoken to many of you on the phone, I've listened to those who have no opinion one way or the other. Excuse me, but I will say, when I came onto council, one of the things I was a strong proponent of was good neighborhoods, and we have 17 strong, and Mr. Downey spoke of sense of place. This goes back many years, and I think we've accomplished that. And the, the slogan is, "We" is greater than "me." And what I've heard over the course of the past month or longer about short-term rentals is some neighborhoods feel that, my opinion, how I've heard it, may be better than others, we don't want it in our neighborhood. And that troubles me greatly, because we are one city, we are 17 neighborhoods strong, and we care about each other. And I have had the opportunity in five, almost five years now, to go neighborhood to neighborhood and meet every person, and I don't care what neighborhood you're in, they are so proud of where they live and where we are, and the things that people say, whether it's a grocery store that's close to them, or it's spooky nook, or it's whatever's going on, people are more together in Hamilton now. And this suggests to me, we're going to separate people out, we want to be different in some neighborhoods. I grew up in the East Side, West Side, and I, I'm embarrassed by that, and so I struggle with this tonight. I heard that we do not want the demise of our neighborhood, Highland Park. I absolutely don't see it, there's no evidence of demise of a neighborhood. We see strength in numbers and in people who have come together. We have regulations to, to manage this in every neighborhood, and I think anyone could stand up and say, I am so proud of my neighborhood, but not want to be singled out. And so I'm really struggling with this, and why we would do that without evidence of crime, what may happen 15 years from now? I would say if we all go back 15 years and say, oh, I don't want to let a hotel come to Hamilton, where would we be? I think we can go back 40 years and say, some leaders did not want I-75 connected to Hamilton, and what did that do to us? And our manufacturing left, and our businesses left, and what were we? We were almost a ghost town, it was frightening, and we've come back and we're connected. So I see the connection of 17 strong neighborhoods being torn apart when we start to separate people out and who we are. My opinion, and I feel strongly, but I think that's what we're all about up here. We represent 63,000 people in this city, and if 63,000 people say, and they haven't yet, back in '21 when we voted on this, they haven't said, we don't want short-term rentals, but there are three, I know in this neighborhood, we have one or two or nine or however many in different neighborhoods. I just don't see it. And so I thank you all, I know you're passionate, I have family that lives in Highland Park, I love Highland Park, but we love all of our neighborhoods, and I wouldn't say any one neighborhood is better than others. Thank you.
Do we know how we're voting on this now?
Well, I want to say one thing real quick, yeah, something real quick.
Okay.
No, you're right, we have 17 unique neighborhoods, no doubt about it, each one's got strengths in certain areas. Highland Park's unique, Hickory Woods is unique, I mean, they're all unique. The way Highland Park is structured, plus I think we're hearing from a majority of, of homeowners in Highland Park, I mean, it's, you can walk to, to school from kindergarten through eight, and then also sophomore to senior in high school, you're close to a hospital. There are certain things about that neighborhood that makes it just so unique, it's probably unlike the other 16. And I'm not saying that they're any better than anybody else, but when you've got homes that are kind of close together, there is a, a strong neighborhood feel about that. I hope that happens in all 17 neighborhoods, but if we prohibit just two, and never hear from 15 others, or whatever, then hey, you know, it's just these two. I've heard of no clamoring from any other neighborhood at all, I haven't, but there's a strong word out there for Highland Park. How do we respond to these issues? Well, we consider what people have said, we listen to them, and then we make a decision that's in the best interest of our entire city, and for those who represent in all neighborhoods, but also in each neighborhood to a degree as well, because we have to look at the issues in that neighborhood, look at the issues in all of our neighborhoods. So, but there is a uniqueness, and that, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm saying actually it's a, it's a good thing, there's a pride, there's a, there's a pride amongst that group. Though I think this legislation might need to be changed a little bit, yeah, because, and this might be county-wide, I'm going to go buy a house somewhere, I want to know if it's going to be the prohibited area, that, that the short-term rentals aren't allowed. I think that's only fair, that before you buy, you know. There's certain scenarios where someone works six months from home, and then six months on the road, that's kind of a unique situation too, and they may want to let their house be run out for a while. I mean, so there are scenarios that, that don't quite fit into this, but I just think this needs to be addressed, and a perfect night, then we can revisit it later, when all the hotels get built, and all the other things are going to be going on here, still in our city. My opinion. So, I think we've all talked, if anybody else wants to add anything they can, if there's any kind of a motion, fine, if there's no motion, then we proceed. Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman. One comment before a motion on here is that I think everybody up here cares about every citizen, about their opinions, we wouldn't have spent all the time that we did listening, and I, I, you know, I kind of think, I hear that if we voted against it or something, we don't care, we do care, we care about all 63,000 people. No matter what the decision is on this, yes or no, I'm going to live with it, I'm going to support it 100%, which way, whatever way it goes. So that's our job up here, you know, it doesn't always go our way or somebody else's way, but you know, we have to still support it and make every, make the best of this, and we're going to work with all the citizens. So I don't think a yes or a no is, you know, tells you that whether you care or not about the citizens, we're, we're up here, that's what we do every day, we, you know, that's what we get paid the big dollars for up here, is because we care, we do this because we care, we don't, and we listen, and I've talked to a lot of people, so I just want everybody to know, we do care about the city. I, I wouldn't make a motion, or can we move this up on the voting now, or make a motion to vote on this now, or can it be moved up?
I think we only, if we're going to vote at 10, that's when we have to decide right now, right? Is that, we're either making one of these two motions, or we're going to follow the agenda, and when we hit 10, we vote on 10. Is that, does that, can anybody agree to that?
Yeah.
If we do that now, we can do it before we hit 10.
Yeah, I, I, just to, to try to resolve the issue, my recommendation is to, for council to go ahead and just, you know.
Move that up.
Just to go ahead of, I don't, we don't need, I, I don't, we don't need to do that, we can keep the agenda, you know, we, we can keep the agenda as is, we can move, I mean, it's whatever the, the chair wants to do, but I think that, hearing the disparate positions on Agenda Item Number 10, it sounds like it would be good for council to go ahead and vote on that item, and then depending upon that vote, then we can see what the direction of, of council is, just to make sure that we resolve that issue.
I guess my question is, can we read Item Number 10 and just move it up in front of that, and so these good people have been sitting out here all night, and, you know, it's, it's been a long night for them, that we can move it up so that they can leave early?
Whatever the, the pleasure of council is.
I mean, if we're all ready to go to the next step and vote on 10, then probably do that, and they could probably leave if they wanted to leave. Yeah?
You're going to be sitting here a lot longer if not, so.
Well, is there a motion at all at this point in time to do anything?
I'll make a motion to move Item Number 10 up and vote on it, if I can say it that way, but.
It's satisfactory, Madam Lauderick?
Absolutely.
A seconded motion. Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Knapp. Let's just do a roll call vote on it, make it easier. We have to read it in?
So we've got a motion to amend the agenda, to move Item Number 10 up to this section of the meeting, the first from Pullman, second from Knapp, the roll call vote, Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
No.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Lauer?
No.
That motion is adopted 5 to 2. So we have Agenda Item Number 10 in front of us.
I want to read that.
Of course. An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Chapter 75A short-term rentals relative to the City of Hamilton Short-Term Rental License Program, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor. House Member Knapp, I move the ordinance be adopted.
There a second? Madam Lauderick, can I, can I make a second on that?
Typically, the chair does not make a second.
Didn't think so. Is there a second on this at all? Is there another motion somebody wants to make at this time?
Mr. Mayor, just so I understand.
Sure.
We're making a motion to adopt the ordinance, just because someone seconds it doesn't mean that it's passing, it means it just gets the ball rolling so that we can all vote on it, am I right?
That is correct, you can make a second and then.
Doesn't mean yes or no. Or it could fail for lack of second.
Correct.
Okay. And what does that mean? That it just goes away?
So then a yes vote is just going to move this along so we can discuss it more, we get more information? See, this is where the confusion, this is, this is the confusion, because typically we would just table to get more, to more information.
In my opinion, tabling it to get more information, how, we can't even decide what we're doing with this motion right here. Can you imagine what the planning department is going to get, all seven different people? I mean.
Carl, I'm sorry, that was the wrong term.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mean information, I just want to separate this out, because I believe in one thing, but I don't believe in the other two.
Either it dies, or we choose one of those two, just for guidance. That's how I view this, is that right?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
A no vote would basically say that you want it to be investigated a little bit, written a different way, yes vote means it goes through, so.
Not necessarily, and that's one of the reasons why we, we propose for you to give us direction, right? Because if you vote no on Agenda Item Number 10, staff does not inherently know by the virtue of your vote why you voted no, unless you give us direction, right? It could, we could say, oh, they voted no because they didn't like the general, short-term regulate, you know, general updates, right? We, we don't think that that's what it would mean, but you, you would need to tell us what you would want to see for us to understand, you know, what ordinance language you would want to see, other than what's in Agenda Item Number 10.
But does that direction have to be given tonight while we're sitting here?
It, it doesn't, we can, we can come back and, and do that if, if that is the pleasure of council.
That's why I just feel like voting no is cleaner, because then we can start the whole new discussion over. whole new discussion over again. Even to pick things out tonight, it's like.
And to separate them. So, that's.
And this is part of the problem that we run into with being on council. It's our, yes, we are supposed to be here to represent our citizens and we're supposed to listen to what they say, but we're all supposed to accept, we're supposed to be able to separate logic from emotion. And what is, I mean, who would not have compassion and emotion, listening to everybody talking about, I wrote this down when I met with Liz, that Highland Park is fiercely protective of their neighborhood. And that is absolutely true. But I feel like our role is to also look at the entire city, how it's going to work. How is this going to, how is this going to work if it happens in Lindenwall? So, it isn't just a cut and dry, let's just, Highland Park are such nice people, let's give them everything they want and be happy. It's much, much bigger than that. And please be patient with us and know that we ask you to respect us as much as we're respecting you when you come and give us your feelings with this. So, I didn't mean to get off on that, but.
Letitia and I had thought that it would be good to have direction in the meeting if possible, because we thought it would be good to have the people who are interested in the issue hear what you had in mind so that they know what to expect next time. But if that's not possible, that's not possible. And we certainly can keep the conversation going to make sure that it's the right thing. If it needs to be changed significantly, then we can work through that process. Or if you, you know, or what I would think we would do if we lack clarity would be to maybe come back with some, just with the language as proposed, but as separated out, whatever you would like.
That's kind of where I'm at with this, is that I think it needs to be separated out. And by voting no here, that gives you a chance to rewrite this in here. Highland Park can have their separate vote and Hickory Woods and the STR language could be all, you know, because I think there's still some work to be done on that. And I think, you know, that's, I'll be voting no on it because of that reason, not because of emotion, no, because of that reason.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, Letitia, a vote of no would mean no exception for those two neighborhoods and no to the code changes.
Correct.
The ordinance changes.
So, the ordinance fails.
That's correct. So, the tweaks, the additional changes that need to be made can come under a new heading, correct?
Correct. And so, that's what the, the first bullet that's on the screen, someone could move to say, you know, I move to postpone the adoption of the ordinance for Agenda Item Number 10 and direct staff to revise the ordinance to only include the proposed general updates and not the prohibited areas.
But that ignores the requests of Hickory Woods and Highland.
Correct.
So, what happens to those?
Then you wouldn't, you wouldn't be reviewing an ordinance, but that is what you already have on Agenda Item Number 10. So, if you wanted to, you know, approve that, that's what's before you right now for, if that has a first, but no second.
A postponement means that those two neighborhoods could bring it back if they wished for council to reconsider. Or would it automatically mean that we're still reconsidering?
Well, I mean, if council wants to do, to approve those two neighborhoods, you know, the prohibited areas, you can vote right now on that prohibition.
Mr. Mayor.
Either way.
Vice Member Fear.
It's 20 after 8. We're not in the agenda at all. For us to try to get our individual thoughts together to give proposed general or the changes that we'd like in the revision, I don't know how that can be done at a meeting like that tonight. I mean, we're just not being, with all due respects, we're not being realistic with that.
Well, it depends upon if you feel strongly about the prohibition areas, if you feel strongly about changing the proposed general updates. The thing is, if this is a no vote, then that says something. If this is a split vote almost, that says something. But maybe this needs to go back to ownership view, I don't know. But I just think it needs to be addressed and voted on tonight, and then people will know where they stand. The City of Hamilton is actually the applicant on this, you know, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead. Thank you.
Just to be clear, if there's a yes vote on this agenda item, then we move forward. The legislation is adopted and we move forward. If there's a no vote, I've heard enough tonight and staff has heard enough tonight, in order to bring back any revisions or any updates back to council to consider.
Exactly. Yeah, but a no vote doesn't terminate the whole concept of having updates to legislation that exists now. It doesn't say no to Highland Park forever. It doesn't say no to Hickory Woods forever, but.
Oh. It doesn't?
Madam Law Director, we have a motion. It has not, that has not yet been signed.
Correct.
So, you second.
How much more time do we give it to say it's dead?
There's no second here. You probably got five seconds. It's dead.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. There's been a lot said about this already. If anyone else wants to add anything at all to what they've already said. Okay. Roll call vote. Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Fear?
No.
Vaughn?
No.
Knapp?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted 4 to 3.
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm sorry. It's, that ordinance has failed. That motion's failed. 4 to 3, or 3 to 4, excuse me.
All right. Now, go to the consent agenda. And that includes staff reports, caucus reports, committee minutes, and an information report about adult-use cannabis rules update.
We're going back to the committee of the whole.
What's that place?
Committee of the whole.
Right, right. An information report.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I missed that.
Right. The information report was a written report that we all got, made part of our, the package that we received. So, committee of the whole, that's when council may ask questions, provide direction or comment on reports. So, is there a motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the committee of the whole take place?
So moved.
Second. Mentioned by Councilmember Knapp, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is kept at 8:23. Okay. Mr. Speaker, lead us in this, please.
Of course. Our first two presentations for agenda items, 1 and 3, will be presented by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Mayor, City Council, thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Before you tonight, it's a recommendation relative to the request for local tier tax abatement through the community reinvestment area by Tandem Ventures LLC. You recognize the buildings, they're right over off of Third Street, the backside of this building here, 20 South Third Street, 26 South Third Street, one right up there, you can see where we're zoning in. What the commercial aspect of this building is going to be a new restaurant. I'll let the description of what the purpose of the rare breed rabbit is, but the tagline is we are a rare breed of a restaurant. And the name of the restaurant is Carmonio, Carmaniola. Now, I'm officially Italian.
You didn't use your hands, it doesn't count.
Yeah. So, this gives you an idea of the type of menu, the type of environment that they're going to be working on. This is really going to be a very different restaurant and for this area here, sit-down restaurant with just really a, just a different feel to it, certainly a different price point, given the fact that you've got a number of the different types of foods and the decor to go with this. You're going to be spending almost $4 million, creating about six jobs and 14 part-time Within this project, there's going to be eight units that are on the second and third floors that are going to be a part of this redevelopment. So, we are proposing a CRA for this. It's within a district that allows for this, a commercial CRA for 50% for 12 years and a residential for the upper floors redevelopment 100% for 12 years. This is comparable to what we have done in this district. It's an overlay district for the CRA. With that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Got me right, you bunched me in there, that's great.
Jody, will you share that presentation on email?
Sure.
I meant to say, Mr. Mayor.
This is a recommendation relative to authorize and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at University Commerce Park. The seller of the property, the City of Hamilton, and the purchaser Logistics Property Group. What we are proposing is the sale of property for, out, it's property right off of Grand Avenue, out by Hamilton Crossings Project there, over by Vora Technology Park. We've got a substation there. We're proposing to sell that property for $65,000 an acre, the purpose of which would be for a data center. Investment of that is roughly between $15 million plus. They are definitely going to be, given the nature of the business, a electric user, a good consumer for the city at at least 15 megawatts. Spoke to the developer of the property here, and he indicated that the building's probably going to be somewhere between 100 and 150,000 square feet. A lot of it's going to have to do with how they situate it onto the property. But just included some information in with the presentation as it relates to just data centers. We've really gotten a lot of interest recently from individuals that are seeking to identify land for data centers. And what we've found is you're looking beyond the, you know, primary markets and secondary and tertiary markets now, or where they're looking for particular sites in those areas that do have power supply and consistent power supply. And of course, we brag about our utilities rightfully, so we have the ability to provide that at a time when it's really gotten to be a desired, desired industry. And logistics been around for over 30 years. They're a company that does both warehousing and data centers. They essentially own real estate. And what I'm asking you is support the sale and development agreement for this project. I have the developer here tonight. If you care to ask him any questions, it's Mr. Doug Swain. He's gotten a chance to work with us for a while now, short time on this project here. We're really starting to push this forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I don't, Jody, I can't remember if I saw it in there. How many employees might there be?
Well, that's, Doug, you can come up here. That's going to really depend a lot upon the actual client. They build the space and then they will lease it out to a particular end user. So, that'll be something that is determined down the road.
Okay. That's what I wasn't understanding. Yeah, you can give more information, that's great.
No, I was going to say is where the assurance that we have that it's going to be a data center is first and foremost that it's going to be built. It's, there'd be a lot of obsolescence for any other type of, it's a very specialty-type business, so as they build it, they will then fill it, sell that space out.
Got it.
But, Mr. Swain, now, if I haven't touched on any, please feel free to sit.
No, I think, good evening. I think you did a good job of explaining it. I think at the end of the day, the amount of employees will somewhat be dependent on the amount of power that eventually is consumed in the facility is kind of a direct relationship with the employees. And we're having some discussions with your director now about what that looks like and what it looks like, you know, two to three to four, five years down the road. I will say that the employees generally are probably a little bit higher wage than, you know, if you think about, you know, industrial and where I came from, a distribution. I mean, you basically have a sophisticated cooling tower in there and you have a couple of employees that will, you know, work to service that. And the other employees that are in the facility will work basically with the racking and the servers and so forth that are in there. So, it is somewhat of a sophisticated operation there. And you may be familiar with that from, you know, the one that's right across the street there, but.
Right, correct.
Hopefully that's.
Okay. Thank you.
So, a quick question. So, this group will be a user of a lot of our fine, reliable utilities?
Yes, most definitely.
Yes, yes, for sure.
Good. Good.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Member.
Mr. Swain, thanks for joining us tonight. We love meeting you, you've had a lot of rigor here tonight, but importantly, you've selected Hamilton. And we respect and we know there are other places in southwest Ohio and our neighboring states and things that might also have some attractions. So, we really appreciate the opportunity that you're bringing us to Hamilton. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I, after this meeting, I think I'm going to go drive by through a few of those neighborhoods for my own curiosity's sake, so.
You have to do all 16. You can't just pick a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for agenda items, 2 and 7 will have presentations from our Director of Engineering, Mr. Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. First of all, I want to repeat the exciting news that Mr. Caddully mentioned earlier today. We received a $150,000 grant for the Train Depot. We're reviewing the grant agreement at the moment, get that executed within the next week or so, and then get LRT back on site to continue the work on the roof on the two-story building and then get that framing done that they needed to, as we discussed earlier. So, we appreciate that from the foundation and we're looking forward to moving forward on that project. The first item is the US 127 resurfacing. This is an ODOT LPA agreement. We have done those before with ODOT. This project is an ODOT project physically outside to the city for the most part, but it does encroach into the city corporation limits. It's north Third Street, north of the bridge over the hydraulic canal. ODOT is requesting an LPA consent legislation. There is no city contribution to the project. This was the drawing that ODOT sent me. It's pretty hard to tell where their limits of the paving are, but they might have signage in the city, they might encroach on somewhat with the paving in the city, I'm not sure. But again, anytime ODOT gets near the city corporation limits, they ask for this consent legislation. Do you have any questions on that?
Thank you, Rich. Thanks for your expertise in dealing with the C HD passenger station.
It's all set to go. The next project is the Pleasant Avenue Landfill Utility Easement.
A lot of directors should, Councilman Lauer, believe that this is going to be discussed right now. Or vote on it separately?
It's my understanding that he plans to recuse himself from this matter, so.
We'll get you in a few minutes.
Just a brief history, the, this was a private landfill that opened in the 1940s. Hamilton leased and operated the site from 1967 until its closure in 1970. Ohio Environmental Protection Agency deemed the city as a responsible party for this landfill. Unfortunately, it's still generating methane gas. So the city submitted and Ohio EPA approved an explosive gas monitoring plan to remediate the methane and mandated a gas collection system be constructed. The construction of this gas collection system requires a utility easement from property owners. We've already made arrangements to appropriate, I'm sorry, to purchase one of the easements. But with this particular property, we've been unable to reach agreement with the property owners on the purchase of this utility easement, and we are proposing to go through the appropriation process to obtain the easement for the construction of the gas collection system. This is a view of the survey for that easement. It's the easement that's outside of houses property, and it starts at Logan Avenue, goes to the north along the outside of houses property, it's on the other property owner's site. The, just as a reminder, I know we've had appropriation of property in the past, but just to let you know, we've already obtained the appraisal, which is done. We've provided a notice of intent and written good faith offer to the property owner, and that's been complete. This is the, this is the caucus report requesting a resolution for the appropriation, and the legislation will be presented on June 26th. Following that approval, we will then provide the ordinance for appropriation, and that legislation will be presented on August 14th. If that is also approved, then we will submit the petition for appropriation and a deposit will be filed with the court system. And be assured, we will continue to negotiate with the property owner to try and obtain this easement before we go through that whole process, because it is obviously a lengthy process of a couple months. Are there any questions from council?
Be real quick, we owned this, we leased this for like three years, and it's been.
That is correct. We operated it. We did not have any ownership on any of the land, we just operated it.
The last three years?
Yes.
But for, we're stuck with it though, basically, is that right?
Yes.
Even though there was 30 years.
Technically, all of the property owners, plus the City of Hamilton, are responsible parties, but because we are the political entity, we are the responsible party in Ohio EPA's eyes. It's a muddy mess.
I like EPA for a lot of reasons, but then you need to get in the glasses, I think. I'm sorry, Rich. Thank you, I know you're working for us, I know you're working for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next up for agenda items four, five, and six will have a presentation from our Director of Neighborhoods and Planning, Mr. Brandon Sarber.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll wait for Councilman Lauer to return. I just want to say, it's my pleasure to be up here to give Liz Hayden a break to catch her breath for a minute. All right, Daniel, do you need to introduce this first item? Okay, the first item here is 219 Main Street. This is a lot that exists on the south side of the 200 block of Main Street. For context, you are looking at Billy Yanks there with the white roof adjacent to the label that says North Sea. Proposed here, as has been recommended by Planning Commission, is a parking lot that will consist of approximately 18 spaces. That parking lot will be screened at Main Street and accessed from the alley. The screening along Main Street will mimic the brick seat wall that you see at Armstead Park, as was approved by ADRB. Any questions?
Questions?
All right, moving on. This next item is a planned development that exists just off of the Sterling Estates subdivision. There were two houses proposed on that remaining acreage. This came to Planning Commission, and the surrounding neighbors were unanimously in support of this because of its low density. The HOA was represented at Planning Commission, and their only concern related to some stormwater, which is being reviewed, and the condition of the building permits are contingent upon engineering, planning staff, and HOA blessing of that stormwater plan. Yeah, any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Brandon, I have one question. So I saw the plots and the way it was laid out, the address said Ross, Ohio in there. So this is all City of Hamilton, this property is all.
Correct.
Okay, unless I looked at it wrong, I thought the address said Ross, Ohio. So, just clarifying.
Yep.
I know where it is and I know where it comes out, but it's kind of on the edge there, I guess.
Yeah, it sure is.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And the final item here is related to 20 High Street. So this is vacation of historic right-of-way. If you can see, surrounded in that teal polygon is the remnants of a road that existed. So 20 High Street, when it was built in the, during the Great Depression, the parcels were not aligned with what was actually built there. So this is really, this vacation is the first step toward cleaning up the parcels to make way for the future redevelopment of the hotel at that site. Any questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor. Brandon, when we received our packets, and there were some, almost 1,100 pages this week of things that we reviewed, Susan just talked about the parcel up in Ross that I looked at, and I thought, that's interesting, because it's in one of those fringe areas that could be borderline, as Susan shared, but this certainly was interesting.
Yeah.
As you had shared, and when you looked at 20 High Street and what it was, and when it was, when it was built, like you said.
Yeah, that western half of the building was built in the right-of-way.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So thanks for the definition that everyone supplied to us, because I think we all looked at, what? So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentations.
Okay. Is the motion for committee to hold be closed?
So moved.
Second again. Councilmember, NAB, second by councilmember Fear, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 8:43. I'll accept the motion if the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. My councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote to reconvene a regular meeting.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
NAB.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Which adopted at 7:0.
That's at 8:43. So is there a motion to pull Agenda Item Number 7 for, councilmember recruiting himself?
So moved.
Second. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember NAB, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now he comes back in, is that right?
Yes, just with a no made, that councilmember Lauer has recused himself from the dais.
I'll make a note for the record, too. So for the record, councilmember Lauer was not in the council meeting discussing or listening to any part of Caucus Agenda Item Number 7. So is there a motion now?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the report to the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 8:45. We now go to the public hearings. I'll accept the motion if the regular meeting be recessed and the public hearings take place. So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember NAB, second by vice mayor Pullman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We go to Agenda Item Number 8, which is a public hearing, please read that to the record if you would.
A public hearing regarding amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 1800 residential design standards.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving amending those residential design standards? Anyone in the office which should be, anyone in the audience want to be heard at this public hearing involving residential design standards? Anyone in council wish to be heard to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
House member Fear.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion by councilmember Fear, second by councilmember NAB, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. That public hearing is closed at 8:46. The second public hearing, please, admit the record reflected, nobody signed a public hearing book for that particular item.
A public hearing regarding an amending, an amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 1250 zoning land use chart, Section 1400 accessory uses, Section 1200 land use area setback and density standards, Section 1600 off-site, off-street parking and loading regulations, Section 1700 signs, and Section 3900 glossary.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving amending those stated zoning sections? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the amending of those zoning sections? Anyone in council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
House member Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Lauer, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 8:47. That record reflected that first public hearing was closed at 8:46. That record also reflected, nobody signed the public hearing book for Agenda Item Number 9. I'll accept the motion if the regular meeting be reconvened. So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember NAB, second by councilmember Ryan, roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
NAB.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7:0.
That was adopted at 8:47. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll accept the motion. Mayor. Vice Mayor Pullman.
Move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished to print a copy of each item in the legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 8:48. We now go to pending legislation, we already did Agenda Item Number 10, go to Agenda Item Number 11.
Emergency ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by removing the June 12, 2024 date from Chapter 723 cultivators, processors, and dispensaries of adult-use cannabis as enacted by Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2023-12-102 to continue to prohibit adult-use cannabis cultivators, processors, and dispensaries after June 12, 2024, second reading.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Ryan, and a lot of directors should make a statement about this at this time.
Yes, there was a question related to council's plan related to this matter. So Agenda Items 11 and 12 are ordinances to continue to prohibit cultivators, processors, and dispensary businesses of adult-use cannabis in the City of Hamilton beyond today's date. Both ordinances provide, the city administration will provide updates to council and to Planning Commission regarding any changes related to Chapter 3780 of the Ohio Vice Code, which is the chapter that governs recreational marijuana. And those updates that should be provided no later than three months after the Division of Cannabis adopts their rules. As listed in the informational report, the Division of Cannabis Control adopted a set of rules that are now administrative law on June 7, 2024, so that was Friday of last week. And so consistent with the language in those ordinances is the plan of staff to provide its first update to the Ordinance Review Commission on Wednesday of next week, and then we will work with the planning department to make a presentation to Planning Commission at an upcoming meeting. And then after that, we will bring whatever recommendations come out of Ordinance Review Commission and also the Planning Commission back to city council for consideration.
Thanks, Letitia.
Okay, any discussion about this one?
Mr. Mayor.
House member Lauer.
I still stand where I have the entire time on this issue. However, I would, I know that we are moving forward, but when we have language in our, on our agenda that says prohibit or continue the moratorium, I am concerned, as this will be a highly competitive industry, and I would hope that we could get it out there as soon as possible, that we are interested, if it benefits us. I for one believe it does benefit us with our public utilities, owning our own public utilities. So I'm just in hopes that we can get this pushed through quickly, once the laws come out. I believe that there are opportunities to, for a cultivation business to come in and potentially settle here. I believe other, I do not believe there will be many cultivation licenses available, and I believe that is, that with our utilities, it's beneficial to our economic development. So I would hope that we could get beyond these, the language of prohibit and moratorium. If I wanted to sell my house, I must put a sign in the front yard that says, hey, I'm open to someone buying my house. And if they can't give me what I want, I understand, and we move forward. But I think it's important that we let everybody know that if this is what council chooses, that we would be interested in the industry.
I want to thank Letitia, your department for the rules update, getting that to us to read. There's a lot there to read. I was kind of surprised, not really surprised, but the dual license medical marijuana dispensary can set up non-medical dispensaries at different locations around town. I didn't know that until I read that in there. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
Okay, so previously, a lot of, and it's come from, you know, councilmember Lauer has been asking a lot of questions about cultivation.
Right.
And so I have spent a lot of time talking about what the opportunities were for a cultivation business to come into the City of Hamilton. But under the now new rules, there is a lottery system for dispensaries to come to a new location, and there is a provision in which if a dispensary is operating in a different city, if they put that in the lottery, that that dispensary could come to the City of Hamilton under the rules.
I found that, also the contact person for dispensary, I mean, I found that to be the reason why it was written, in a one-mile separation, is there a one-mile separation for dispensaries? Can I read that in there?
That is in, I think the draft rules, I'm not sure of the current rules.
There's a lot to read and a lot to try and understand and all that, so. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor. House member Pullman.
Letitia, on the lottery system, even if we have this prohibition on this until, I mean, I think everybody has to understand is, we could change this in a matter of one meeting, correct? With a, you know, to lift it, but that doesn't hurt us with the lottery or anything that they're, that you're talking about for cultivation, does it?
So, yeah, there's two, so there's two, three different categories. There's cultivation, there's processing and dispensing. And so, under the current rules for cultivation and processing, that opportunity is only to convert an existing facility.
Right.
But what Mayor Moller was just asking about was a dispensary setting up a new location. That is based upon our current prohibition, a dispensary cannot come to the City of Hamilton because we prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries, and we also have a prohibition for recreational marijuana dispensaries. But if we That just be based upon our current prohibition, a dispensary cannot come to this, the city of Hamilton because we prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries, and we also have a prohibition for recreational marijuana dispensaries. But if we were to lift that, uh, under this lottery system, uh, a dispensary could potentially come to the city of Hamilton.
And that's what, you know, okay, that's, we have the option to lift that at any time.
That is, that is correct.
Correct. Until they get their rules straight is basically what we're saying, right? Because all the rules are still not a hundred percent.
We have a, so the rule process is, is going to be ongoing. So we have our first set of rules. We do have rules in the Ohio Administrative Code. It is the administrative law now. We have, um, there were, they took action, so we have nine, um, new or amended rules in our Ohio Administrative Code related to adult-use cannabis, recreational marijuana. But they are going to be rolling out several other rules. Um, and so this is going to be an ongoing process. Um, and so, but this is, this is the first set that we ha- have, that we've been waiting for.
Thank you. I think it's a biennial review, is that correct? We're going to review things biennial. This is, it's going to be constantly reviewed, I guess.
The license program, correct?
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'm glad to see that, that things are starting to take shape. I, I know the voters are frustrated, um, you know, back in December when we first took this up, I was, I was frustrated too, but I understood why we, you know, we have to take up this ordinance, and that's why I was voting no. But, um, I, I understand, as long as I see progress, I, I understand why, you know, we're asking to do what we do. But, um, I, I, I know this can work here in Hamilton if we do this right, and we can pass the right ordinances here that will protect our city, protect our neighborhoods and our schools, and, uh, really, really make this work, you know? Cultivation side, um, can, can really be a huge utility, uh, user. And, uh, as we heard tonight, we've got another one coming on board. So I think that's a, a tra- deck, you know, um, a path we need to keep, uh, investigating. So hopefully here in a few months, we can, uh, get some more solid, uh, rules from Columbus and, you know, hopefully, uh, work down a, a positive path to make this work in, work in Hamilton. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call vote on number eleven.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
No.
Orders adopted, six to one.
Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is the second reading of emergency ordinance.
Emergency Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by removing the June twelfth, twenty twenty-four date from the Emergency Ordinance Number EOR twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash one oh three to continue to regulate marijuana, cannabis operations, marijuana, cannabis cultivation, and marijuana cannabis dispensaries via Section twelve fifty zoning, zoning land use chart, permitted uses, conditional uses, accessory uses, Section thirty-nine hundred glossary, as previously amended by said emergency ordinance, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
No.
Orders adopted, six one.
Can we now go to Agenda Item Number Thirteen? Second reading of an ordinance involving cannabis, city employees.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending and supplementing Chapter one eighty, substance abuse testing for certain employees to clarify that use possession and distribution of adult-use cannabis is prohibited for all city employees, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
And Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. Discussion on this one? Roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orders adopted, seven zero.
We go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, second reading of an ordinance involving substance abuse testing.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending and supplementing the Chapter one eighty-six substance abuse testing for all municipal employees not covered by Chapter one eighty to clarify that use possession and distribution of adult-use cannabis is prohibited for all city employees, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orders adopted, seven zero.
Agenda Item Number Fifteen, second reading of an ordinance involving the pay range and city clerk classification.
An ordinance amending Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash one oh six, adopted December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, as amended from time to time by amending the pay range of, for the city clerk classification, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orders adopted, seven zero.
Now to the new legislation, first reading of an ordinance involving temporary easement to permanent easements.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the purchase of a temporary easement and two permanent easements on property located at in-lot number two eight six six nine and in-lot number two nine zero four six, located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio for Phase Three of the Hamilton Beltline Project, Hamilton Industrial Grinding Incorporated, property owner, first reading.
Go to Agenda Item Number Seventeen, first reading of an ordinance involving, uh, residential design standards.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section eighteen hundred residential design standards, city of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Go to Agenda Item Number Eighteen, first reading of an ordinance also involving amending or zoning ordinances.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section twelve fifty zoning land use chart, Section fourteen hundred accessory uses, Section fifteen hundred land area setback and density standards, Section sixteen hundred off-street parking and loading regulations, Section seventeen hundred signs, and Section thirty-nine hundred glossary, city of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Go to Agenda Item Number Nineteen, which is a resolution involving our wellness benefit plan agreements.
A resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Hamilton, Ohio and Pinnacle Financial Partners for the health savings, health reimbursement, and flexible spending benefits plans, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the amended and restated wellness benefit plan agreements to implement said plans.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion, hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay, we go to Agenda Item Number Twenty, which is a re- resolution involving some grant funds for, I believe, our gas main replacement project.
A resolution authorizing grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation, DOT Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, PHMSA, for the twenty twenty-four PHMSA grant, miscellaneous gas main replacement project, and directing and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents to receive said grant funds.
Mayor.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, which is a resolution involving the Butler County Solid Waste Management District Management Plan.
A resolution approving and adopting of the solid waste management plan for the Butler County Solid Waste Management District.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Nab. Comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, a resolution involving our side lot program.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real properties acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as a side lot, one thousand star avenue, four thirty Liberty Avenue, and four thirty-one Sycamore Street and Henry Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion, hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We now go to the audience of the city manager. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's late in the evening, been here for a while, there's a lot of great work done. Uh, there were two items in the caucus agenda I just want to draw attention to, and we've talked a lot over the years about live, work, and play. Uh, two of those caucus items were tandem ventures and logistics. Uh, just want to make sure that it's noted that those two developments will bring housing to our downtown, add a restaurant, and create jobs in our community. And there's a lot of staff that, um, that worked, uh, to bring that to fruition, but I want to especially thank and acknowledge Jody, Erin, Stacy, and Lauren, our economic development team, for, uh, their efforts in bringing that forward. Thank you.
Audience, city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I just want to give a final, uh, announcement of our Neighborhood Summit that's coming up on Saturday, June twenty-second. You'll see up on the screen, there is a QR code. It is at Hamilton High School on that Saturday. You can still register. This will include breakfast and lunch, but more importantly, really getting to know, uh, your neighbors, getting to know more about the city. Our theme this year is how do you do? How do you do means I hope you meet several new people, and also, how do you do that? So it's going to be an opportunity for you to hear from city leaders, experts within our community and within the county. It's, uh, ten dollars, and it's eight-thirty in the morning until one-thirty. And city council, I know most or all of you are going to be attending. After lunch, we're going to have a meet and greet. So it's an opportunity for anyone that's in attendance to meet city council, also meeting your school board members, uh, our other elected officials. I know Representative Crowthers will be there. Our city manager, I hope, is going to be there, uh, but any other officials. And these are people that normally residents just don't talk to on the street. But I think it's a great idea and opportunity, just a meet and greet, but many, many other sessions and a lot of hard work has gone into this from the Department of Neighborhoods and Seventeen Strong. So please come. We don't have a lot of tickets, I will tell you, it's getting down to the wire. So please, please register and come. The last thing I just want to say is, if you haven't noticed the two beautiful new murals that are on the river, uh, it was so fun to go under the High, High Street Bridge on the main street side and to see the artists at work, amazing. And then from Spooky Nook across the street, that mural is beautiful. There are so many people to thank for that. Vision Partnership was part of the one at Main and High, and then, um, um, what's it called? Art, um, how? Street Sparks, yes. Uh, Street Spark is responsible for the other one, and it is huge. It's the second largest mural that we've done. Please pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple things. I had quite a few high school reunions in town this past weekend, and, uh, one was a fifty-year reunion, and a lot of those folks hadn't been back to Hamilton for forty years, and they were amazed where we're at in Hamilton, Ohio. And they were able to see the one mural along the river that was being painted from inside Spooky Nook where they had their, uh, their gathering, but a lot of very pleased people about where we've come in the last forty years, ups and downs, but we're really in it now. So I for parade, if you know of a baseball team, football team, anybody wants to be in the parade, uh, a veteran, anybody wants to celebrate our independence, please have them contact me or contact Jacob Stone, who is coordinating this with the Amone Community Foundation. If anybody on city council wants to volunteer or on city administration, see me or talk to Jacob and, um, join us. Anybody else on council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, on June the nineteenth, Jefferson Alliance is going to have a cookout, um, and we're going to have Chef, city manager, Bo Kite, um, in attendance. And this is kind of a port- an important meeting as Jefferson is moving forward on some things, and I would highly encourage anyone in the Jefferson neighborhood to come out, but anyone else as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
Just a final wrap-up on our veterans banners, uh, when the mayor mentioned about the Fourth of July and our, uh, our Memorial Day Parade. But importantly, the veterans banners are all installed now for the class of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. We will reopen the applications. I'm getting a lot of calls for banners to be perhaps placed this summer, and we'll reopen the application process at Veterans Day in November, and that will run out through February of two thousand and twenty-five for our class of two thousand and twenty-five. We have just over three hundred and sixty banners throughout our city now, throughout the entire footprint as a result of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and we know that we're already trending over one hundred for the class of two thousand and twenty-five. So those of you who are watching and, or will read about it and, and see websites, the city of Hamilton, the Chamber of Commerce, and the, uh, Hamilton Community Foundation, as well as our partners, will, will talk about it this coming November, so they have plenty of time to apply for a banner for your loved one, those, those who served in the armed forces, uh, through, through history of the United States. So thanks very much for all your support.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear. Councilmember Fear.
Just to wrap this thing up about the Airbnb list, what is the best way to get information to you? Would you like each council member to send you an email of what they'd like, or do we have come to planning, or how can we keep this thing moving for you?
I think that sounds great. I am planning on working with Letitia to come back with three separate things to vote on, and then we'll reach out tomorrow and see how, if there's other, I heard mention of other tweaks and language things to get feedback on that, to call, meet, whatever you prefer, we'll make ourselves available.
Okay.
A way that we could have something presented to ordinance review after a certain point in time and just kind of give us an update of where we're at.
It, I don't think that's necessary unless you're asking for substantial changes, so I just need to understand what you're asking for.
You'll gauge that by what you receive?
Yes. I think that if there's big changes that, that you haven't already reviewed, I don't think saying no to something you've already reviewed is a big change, because people have gotten public hearing notices about that and opportunity for our input. But if you're making a big change and saying, I think it should all be, you know, we should do this totally different thing, then yeah, I think it should go to Planning Commission.
You went through ordinance review the first time to even get here.
Yes, we took it through Planning Commission.
Major change, ordinance review is not a major change, we'll just see the tweaks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of figure out what.
So Liz, would there be any advantage to you to send out to council the three changes you're kind of anticipating, and then let us read those individually?
Absolutely.
And make our comments from there?
Yes.
So I would like to go back and staff to circle back and, and just discuss what we heard tonight and bring forward to council a couple of options. How to proceed?
Okay, thank you. And then I'd like to just say one other thing. The Hamilton Parks Conservancy has a new park, and it is the Steve Timmer Park, and there is a dedication this Friday at three-thirty. The address is seven sixteen Gordon Smith Boulevard. And there is information on Facebook, at least on my page, I posted like the picture and everything. This is something that Steve Timmer said for years, that we needed to do things for